And we're recording for this meeting. And we'll be broadcasting online as well in our closer home. You are now broadcasting with me to our online audience and I refer to our coordinator.
Okay, good evening. I'll open the planning board meeting. And I'll begin with a roll call from the planning board members, Alden Clark.
Here.
Lawrence How.
Here.
Charlie Thomas-Sonoma.
Here.
Our Jamie Pennington is not here, Heather Rogers is not here, Dan Rusting.
Here.
Brian Falcon.
Here.
And then the Chair Rick Tanger. And before we get into the public hearings, I'd like to have a motion from the board. I understand that the sponsors of the two zoning public hearings have agreed to reverse the order. So I would like to have a motion from the planning board to take the part clause of overlay district out of order and take that first.
I'll move to change the order of the public hearing.
Okay, any discussion? Not in all the favor? Okay, that passes. It's right over to you.
This is Ted O'Shannon, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. We have Marty Preston and Mark Wright and other members of the Planning and Development Committee. Here tonight for a joint meeting on the P5 overlay and the ADU. I'll call our meeting order as well. We also have the President of the Committee of the Whole Items, Councilor Khan, Councilor Harmon, Councilor McCollay, Councilor Reggie, and Councilor Grant are here.
Great. Okay, so we will begin with the joint public hearing on the ordinance to amend the new report, bringing ordinance to establish a new Part 5 of overlay district. From October 2nd. We have a presentation from the sponsors.
Just very, very brief conversation, not really presentation. I just wanted to provide you with an update today, since it's helpful. So in the interim between last meeting and this meeting, the Planning and Development Committee of the City Council has met. And so coming into that meeting, the two sponsors presented some friendly amendments, essentially amended our own proposal. And then in the context of that meeting, we went through, in particular, I would say, the section about, you know, development standards, particularly bullet point number four in each room, and that produced some additional amendments. All of them frankly were friendly at that time. And I believe, I'm hoping that Director Andy Port has circulated that to you all. And so you may have had a chance to look at it. And largely, the changes were around tightening some language, cleaning up some of the questions about the four and five lots. If you had a chance to look at it, you probably remarked on that. Making it a lot clearer and making it sort of plainly clear that we're referring to the area in the black dash line very specifically. And then also some adjustments to the maximum square footage of the building and a few other things. So at this time, there are a couple of outstanding issues that need to be resolved. But we're sort of hoping that we've presented enough to the planning board that you may feel in a position to just give us an advisory opinion one way or the other, or maybe some things that we should continue to consider. So the city council can finish its work and that, you know, take a vote on this one, one way or the other. And have the answer.
Okay, now we'll open up the city council members and planning board members. For any questions or, I guess, disappointing questions before we go into the hearing. Do you have any, like, votes?
I guess we're small in terms, right? Um, so coming out of last Tuesday meetings where we generated a lot of these revisions or amendments, I guess. So Section 33D or, uh, yeah, or D. It's the one about the maximum stories. Uh, so we, we had some discussion in debate about four, five stories. I see that you guys settled on four, where, I'm just asking how, where thoughts on that?
So specific to the height and the total amount of square footage, those haven't, haven't changed, but they also haven't. We haven't finished the conversation on those, either between myself and my co-sponsor and with the committee. We were waiting on the planning office to help us do some calculations they have. And so we went from 22, for example, on the square footage, went from 22 to 68. But as I mentioned last week in committee, there was some discussion that actually that may still be insufficient based on the plans that presented. Because it's always in the details how you measure. So that number may be closer to 100,000 square feet, but that still is a conversation. And the same thing, I would say, applies largely to the height, the four stories versus five. So this is exactly as we finished the meeting last week, not the product of more amendment. I didn't, I didn't personally want to kind of muddy it by throwing in more amendments in the middle of, middle of the conversation. So is this the final form on those two figures? And those are the two things that are really outstanding? I don't know yet, but I think that's, that's something the council can take up and finish and resolve.
Okay. Does the planning board agree that, given that, yeah, let me be very clear. What I desperately want tonight is for us to close this public hearing and move the process forward. So I guess the question to the planning board is, given the language as this, you know, is that enough for you guys to be able to, to move forward, knowing that that may change yet?
I have some questions, but I'm not sure if that, what you're trying to announce is specific to any of my questions, say.
Let's hear what you have to say.
Well, just following up on that, this is more to be different. Where the maximum building structure height of four stories, if you have one height on the low street side and the other height in the parking lot. It is, would be maximum height on the low street side of four stories?
We would generally be taking the beat out of the, you know.
That's height, that's height, that's not a story.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So generally speaking, I, if you want to be up on the, which would then, you know, count the low street. Get five stories. Whereas if you were looking at the parking lot side. Find the money of the plans when you receive. It would be five stories to achieve that, like, versus four stories.
So I guess I, I raised that with the sponsors. Would you want to have them to allow the kind of development?
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think the long story short is it's an open question. No, that's the, so when I mentioned there are a few things outstanding, these are really the two. The footprint of the building, the 22 to 68, possibly more square foot. Call it coverage of the lot, if you will, or the footprint. And the second is the height. And I think, you know, to your point, as always, height is, seems to be a very amorphous thing. Because it depends where you measure it and how you think about it. So I think these are, these are the final debates the council really needs to have. And we talked last week about setting the stage, if you will, for future efforts in this same area. And what, what precedent do we want to set or not? Understanding that it's not a legal precedent, but just that, you know, we are sort of making a statement about what's acceptable in the area. I will say, I don't think, generally speaking, the five back and the four front, if you consider the, the lot side to be front, was overly questionable.
And you're just following up. If you're asking us at this point to say, we recommend four stories, that's, you know, this is, you're asking for planning board recognition. I guess you, how would you like the recognition to come?
Well, I, I mean, if, if the planning board has a strong feeling, one way or the other, about what the maximum height could or should be, we're happy to take that into account. But we're also okay if you're not sure, as, as we're not, and we need a little bit more debate on it. I just think, you know, I've been around long enough when the planning boards, the recommendations were fairly minimalistic. And just, you know, here are a few things to think about, too very in-depth, you know, you should change these words. So anywhere on that spectrum, as you see, that is, of course, your prerogative and understand that. We welcome any feedback anywhere on that spectrum. But I think the broader question we ask ourselves, again, would we want to see a litany of five-story buildings in that area? We're all hoping, of course, to achieve SHI and to have that local control returned back to us. That's part of this big endeavor and that would, would give us that control in zoning. But want to have a sensible start here with this proposal.
I'm curious as to, your thoughts as to changing it to be not allowing mixed use?
So, yeah, we talked about this at length in committee as well. And part of this sort of conversation with, about the quantum of vote. And so you had asked, raised that question in prior planning board meetings, is it six or is it eight? And the, and we have the city solicitors, so certainly I don't have to pretend to be an attorney, which I'm not. But I mean, generally speaking, the understanding is that all residential has a quantum of six and a majority vote. And that having the mixed use is what would push you potentially up into the eight. So in an, in an effort to simplify it. Now, with that said, there is the potential that the council could take an additional vote or an additional ordinance to then allow mixed use. But last thing I'll say is we also backed away from the idea of sort of trying to require or really forcibly add mixed use into it in an effort to keep the, the developer sort of interested in this.
Yeah, kind of agree. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, we also, in discussion and the amendments, the, the final whereas at the very beginning, we did add the including, including the potential for mixed use there. Given that, you know, I think, you know, we had the discussion in committee. I personally would very much like to see commercial use there. Again, I put myself in saying, if I lived in the building, I would like to go downstairs and get coffee, you know, those sorts of things. But given the constraints of it, it wasn't one of the constraints we really wanted.
So given the fact that you're not going to be, well, maybe this doesn't make it, I just point out that a lot of the design requirements in this smart growth district is a trouble point for a store to accommodate commercial uses. But I guess you don't, the idea that you might, the council might, you know, subsequent to it, have a lot of commercial uses, you shouldn't worry about that.
Yeah, and I think at the end of the day, I mean, you know, the zoning board would still have a say in here. It could be a dimensional variance, I think, in that, in that case, and they could go for a shorter first item. Because I, I think the general lead is to allow mixed use, not to require mixed use. So knowing what the final answer is going to be is impossible at this time.
And then my final suggestion would be in section 33C. Under the paragraph of application to plan approval.
Yes.
And there are a number of items, A, B, and C, in the, in the development agreement. I would simply suggest that you add an item D, saying that the development agreement should be binding on all successors in the signs. Just so that, you know, because you're talking about the current.
Yeah, happy to, to, to add that belt suspenders. I think we were intent wise, we're trying to capture that in A with running it with the land. But I, I'm all for any more words we can add that make it crystal clear that here, in this case, we're talking about a single, essentially becomes a single parcel, a single project. But we're very keenly aware of the potential that other parties could always get involved one way or the other. So I don't see any problem with adding something.
And then if I may, I'd like to ask our legal council just two questions that are related to this. And it's not that I'm opposed to this at all, it's just like, boy. So there are two provisions here that are a little bit unusual. And I just wanted to get your opinion on it. The first one is under section 33B, statu, and it's in red, in this red line version, if you can have that in front of you. But basically says, the zoning district isn't showing our plan and it can be defined by meets and bounds after an application, when an application is submitted. So that, is that something that can be done? In other words, the actual definition of where the zoning district is, doesn't need a final city council vote?
No, it does need a final city council vote, because you need to be able to show it on your map. So.
Or show the map, it's a general.
Right, but then it should be refined by the meets and bounds. I mean, I think that there is obviously a technical difference. I don't know enough about the site and the differences to tell you whether it's a substantive difference.
My sense is not a substantive difference.
Then, then I think it's not, it's not an issue of, it's not a substantive difference. Because you're defining it, you're just asking for another type of way to define the same area.
And then the other question is, sorry.
So do we feel it necessary to say, that's bound versus a site? Because we don't use that as much as we used to.
What do you do with that? If I may, it's not common, actually, very common, to have a meeting about zoning matters now, speaking, you know, going back in time. So, yes, generally speaking, my, you know, view of this is, we really would be applying this additional sentence here, shall we, as this to pick up. As indicated, there might be a difference between them, there really isn't any. The meets and bounds that are depicted off the floor here, and the meets and bounds that were on that, on the plate and plant we're looking at. So I wouldn't really see any, who knows? But we really wouldn't be relying on. Site plan to be processed, because it's, you know, you know, six inches or something out of, no one would be able to change. Really effectively for zoning purposes, we would be using this map unless there's someone, you know, but, you know, you work out. As I mentioned, it's a negative difference for doctor, these two.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think the, the meets and bounds plans may ultimately be useful, as, as the planning director said, in site plan review for engineering review of a project. And that's why I think it's tied to an application.
And then the other, the final thing that I would raise is just your general advice about this issue of the plan being subject to a development agreement that isn't adopted as part of the zoning. So it's a, it's a separate agreement that has to have certain things in it. And I know the finder, she's in her contract, so that's my concern, just the idea of not adopting everything in the zoning, every other things that are adopted outside of the zoning department.
If I may, no, just for record on the departmentary care, so I think this one, just for the record, suggest revision to run the word effective. Meaning, I would go with the applications.
So, you know, when you look at the case law on what could be called contract zoning, there is, as long as there are reasonable sort of planning reasons and purposes for doing that, making those distinctions. And the legislature, the city council, has a valid reason for requiring that development agreement, which I, I believe it does and has laid out in that section, I don't have any concerns with it.
Maybe also, if I need to offer a, yes, Paul?
A, a couple of questions, couple of these. Well, I guess this was under item number four, related to open space. But the current amended language calls for 100 square feet per unit, which part discussion would be a little over 20,000 square feet of open space. But when I, when I go to the smart growth district, it, it suggests that open space should be usable public and semi-public common spaces adjoining sidewalk that create activated pedestrian areas for dining or similar social activity. So that's an urban solution for open space, which is an expansion of the public realm, the sidewalk and street environment versus 100 square feet per unit, which is kind of more of a suburban solution, more of that green space. So when I look at the definition of open space in the zoning code, it, it talks about space on a lot unoccupied by buildings. It's not streets, driveways, off-street parking or loading spaces. So it, it, it will be very difficult to get to 20,000 square feet of open space, given the definition that exists. And, and I really would question whether that should be our goal to begin with, or whether we should be more consistent with the smart growth district requirements and, and look to have a minimal setback from the sidewalk. Like it's 60% of street frontage, the, the way it's described in, in the smart growth district. Before there can be a setback, so it creates more of an urban environment. And if we're thinking about urban mixed use for this broader context, I, I think that's something that we should think about very seriously. So I just, I think 20,000 square feet of open space as it's defined will be a very difficult thing to achieve, and I'm not sure we even want it in this context. So that's, that's one question. The, the other question related to open space and setbacks is whether or not along Low Street, we, we want to think about a more significant setback or perhaps other mitigations along Low Street, given all of the public commentary about traffic and safety along Low Street. And try to stay away from the solution that is being proposed right now. But, but if hypothetically, there were residential units that fronted on Low Street at the ground level of the building, all of that activity spilled out, I think you want enough of a setback between the building and the sidewalk that, that we feel like there's a level of safety there for, for the district. So right now, we've got a minimum setback. I think the scheme that's proposed has only about a six-foot setback from the property line. I know this, this came up when we talked about the expanded residential district next to the commuter. But I think that bears a little bit more discussion. And I'm not even clear where the property line is along there, the diagram is pretty fuzzy. But I think that, that should be resolved with, with more specific dimension. I think safety is the primary. But I, I would go back again to my first point. I, I think the open space requirement needs to be thought about again, and it should be more consistent with the smart growth district. So that, that's one question.
So if I may, I'm going to talk to that a little bit. So I think this also did come up in committee and really it, you, I like that you asked the question together, because they're all related. I mean, I think what you, what you're following from an intense standpoint is we're obviously being pushed, pushed on these, you know, square footage of the footprint of the building, you know, going 22 to 68, possibly to more. Because we are starting with the renderings as sort of a point of start. And at the same time, though, we're grass being going up. And then, so we're basically pushing the, the sort of the limits on all ends. So I don't think there's an inherent disagreement that we could solve it a different way. You could solve it with setbacks that have an open space requirement. The open space requirement could, could be a way to try and force the, the thing to open a little bit up. So it's not just a monolithic 95,000 square feet building that's a giant enormous rectangle. And for reference for those, just because I'm not the best at spatial relations. I mean, we're talking roughly between four and five Boston Way buildings glued together to get to that volume. So I think if, if there were recommendations about saying, maybe that's the trade. And that's what we tried to talk about a little bit in committee was, maybe back off 100 square feet, maybe we ask for a setback. Maybe we don't grant the full 93,000. And, you know, with respect, I think we're all trying to approach it from the sense of those renderings. But at the same time, this entire exercise has been a little bit about at least understanding what we might like to see down there. Instead of just saying, let's just write a zoning that's the same as the picture. Which didn't seem to create any opportunity for resident input. So personally, having a little setback off of Low Street may be very, make a lot of people happy. Say, for example, in the area and those that have to traverse it and be near it. And doesn't really matter as much if there's an open space in the middle of it, perhaps not. So I think there's a lot of openness to that. And if you had figures, like you said, come down to 50 or 20 square feet, or maybe eliminate the open space requirement in favor of something else. As long as we can hit that intent, trying not to allow a singular, basically warehouse-style building, I think we could all.
I, I keep looking at this in the context of the, the goals of the broader district. And if the broader district is about an urban pedestrian environment, that's, that's streetscape, you know, and we, we can talk about sidewalks in a minute. But streetscape is, you know, a widening of that public realm where, where you want a plaza space, where you want, you know, restaurants opening out to the outside. That's the kind of environment that I think we're talking about in the broader district. And when I see the 100 square feet per unit, that, that kind of means there's a suburban formula working. I don't think it's really consistent. So that, that's one thing. Just, it's in terms of the building footprint, I think there may eventually be a discussion about this. But I, 68,000, I think, relates to the residential ground floor plan. There's below that, there's a parking. And the parking garage has a much larger footprint than 68,000. So it's a question of how we want it to be in terms of the maximum footprint of the building. But on Low Street, the, the, that parking garage footprint is above grade. At the north side of the building, where the elevation is 10 feet higher, it's below grade. So the question is to how, how the city would consider that. That, that footprint is, is larger than 68,000 that we're talking, that made one of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that figure 68,000 came from one of the drawings. It was one of the bullet points. And then the question internally became, how did they get the 68,000? And there was some theory that maybe the way that they were counting rooftop space was potentially either being included or excluded and so forth. The 93,000 figure, I would probably defer to Director Port, because his office computed that based on trying to take approximations off of this map to really give what the actual ground coverage is. Lastly, to your point, yes, this is the great debate. I mean, what, it's not just what do you count, it's what do you, you know, what is it you're trying to achieve here with this? And I think, you know, usually we talk about lot coverage percentages, but in this case, we've been more attacking the, the square footage. So Andy, want to add anything about how you calculated?
Yeah. Just by, I've all been looking at this graphic right here. Essentially just because we did not have a survey planner meets and bound provided by the plan order developer for this concept. We did have overlay applied on an aerial photograph. Basically taking this plane right here, we call geo-referencing, meaning stretching it to fit the site in our, in our GIS mapping software. Our office coordinator ran through this, uh, where, to get the calculations of these areas. And in essence, what we were looking at was recognizing that this building footprint right here wraps around here. So this is the ground level, this sort of driveway turnaround. Again, this is a concept, I'm referencing directly in the zoning, it's a concept that we've all been dating contracts to different permit office. Uh, but this, in turn, trying to just make sure that we're all talking about accurate numbers. It seemed apparent that looking at this and then looking at this, we were sort of making sure we're all talking about the same numbers. What, what was noticed was that this line right here actually is representative of a first floor on that graphic, where this is actually a, a level above, essentially where there's outdoor space for the residents, obviously living there. Same thing here and here. But when you look at the renderings, it's actually up here above grade.
The left one to the section.
Uh, this?
Yeah, so you'll see the section, the parking garage extends all the way to the face of the building on the north side. And you will assume just efficient parking garage layout. It would be a rectangle that's below the building here. Top of it, some of these open spaces could be on the roof of the park. Even the drop off, unless it created a very efficient parking, you know, that could be it.
Uh, well, in the rendering they provide, that's a green level of the market, that would be a short parking, parking underneath. Below that, it's almost, yeah, below that, yeah.
So that's, that's why I'm saying, I think, depending on how you measure the building, measure the parking garage footprint, it, it would be bigger than.
Just to, just to know on that, I mean, given what we see in the site and, and the outline during this, do we even need to have maximum building? Because it can't get any bigger than the lot. So right now, it would essentially be a lot. I think you don't need to have a maximum building. Well, yeah, so I think, I think that the, you're getting into a possibility. If you just take it everywhere, you lose all the, all the undoing.
I, I think that's fair, as long, as long as potentially we can offset it though, in some things. And the setback consideration or this open space, something. But I, I hear what you're saying. And yeah, I think this was, this would have been more relevant if there had been more than one building on the, on the lot. And then you would say, okay, you know, don't, don't make one jump, we're just going to tighten one or try and, and be reasonable. But yeah, I think that's fair.
So on, on building height, I, I guess, to say, the way of defining this, so it's four stories above the elevation at the north side of the building. That's, that's a formula that I think translates effectively across the overall site. Again, three stories of residential above commercial. That gets you your four stories or 45 feet in height. And, and yes, the site slopes down to Low Street, it creates another 10 feet. I think that can be accommodated. But I think your baseline elevation ought to be the upward elevation of the site. And which would be more common to the overall, and, and we go four stories from there. Just a couple of other quick things. And again, this, the question of whether we want to have. And again, this, the question of whether we want to add any more detail other than a reference to the Smart Growth District. Smart Growth District requires five-foot-wide sidewalks. It also requires street trees every thirty feet. Talks about streetlights, street furniture, et cetera. And again, thinking about the broader mixed-use development. And this is the first piece of what we hope will be an entire district. The way this property is defined right now is this property includes the, the sidewalks on the north side and the west side of the building, also on the Low Street. Primarily the north side and the west side, which means that sidewalk detail really ought to sort of assume what the broader sidewalk detail should be for the district. I don't have any problem with the five-foot dimension mentioned in the Smart Growth District. But not really clear that there's another dimension that should accommodate street trees. So I would suggest that we, rather than just say five-foot sidewalks, instead of five-foot pedestrian passage dimension of the sidewalks and three feet or escape of the street trees. Then, then you have a formula that kind of can be applied to the overall district.
So a total of eight, you mean, three plus five?
It would be three plus, eight, two.
And just to go on that, if I could, I think we could do better than the, than the street view this that they have here with the trees on the inside of the site. It'd be nicer for pedestrians that the trees were in the upper area of the inside.
And again, that, that relates to the commercial and restaurant. It's not creating a barrier between the sidewalk and the commercial space. That's why street trees are all without a profile. So, yeah, a detail like that, I think, should find its way in. The only other thing I would say, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we change any language related to this. But, but the Smart Growth District also has an extensive section related to design standards. I, I support all of those design standards. But it, it concerns me that we are in a process discussing a specific scheme where there isn't a, a design review of what is being proposed. And whether or not it's pushing for consistency in the Smart Growth District, or whether it's, it's a review of the design proposal independent of the Smart Growth District. I think it's very, very important for a project of this size and this impact on the city to have some design. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm not clear on whether or not the only place that you could leverage Smart Growth District is in this, this proposal, the overlay. So I would hate to see this project go all the way through, you know, friendly forty B or not, without there being some specific.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just say, I share your heartburn. But it's very difficult to square that with needing to do this by right and avoiding the, the special permit route, which is probably a, a threshold question for the viability of this thing in the first place. So in that sense, I would offer that forty R is probably the best that we could do in the sense that at least we have those design guidelines and at least they provide some bumpers. Are they as good as a board-driven, you know, design, formal, formal designer review? They're not. But, but absent, you know, re, rewriting those, and that was why we started with forty R in the foundation. And anyways, I don't see us reasonably being able to achieve that. And then it would still be acceptable, again, to either do special permit or to retry and rewrite the design standards to be even, say, more, you know, designable or more viable.
But it's not clear that even the forty R standards apply unless this overlay district is.
Oh, well, yeah, so I mean, now you're rewinding all the way to the first meeting. And that was, that's the endeavor here, trying for hoping, hoping that maybe we can get some traction with this. But I talked that nauseating about that we may not, the risks around that. So, I hear your heartburn.
My, my heartburn, that, that in general, I, I think there needs to be more of a conscious effort of design review of, of these major projects. And I'm concerned that somehow we're going to move in a direction on this where that doesn't happen. And, and I think that, that would be a mistake.
Other questions or?
I just, just wanted to, I, I agree with Bob Goshen in mentioning about the height. And. Getting the flexibility on both sides of it.
So we, basically, we want the language for this overlay district not to, not to reflect the normal the city in Arizona.
Correct, I presume that there's a fight over forty, might clarify what that, you know, expectation might be to this. What you made today, we can both, I suppose, just refer to that.
Okay, if there is nobody else at this point, and this is kind of the planning board in the City House. So if you ask anything, I would open the public hearing. Let's open the public hearing, reopen. Any comments from anybody, please come forward to the microphone. Please identify your name and address and go ahead.
Hi, I'm at the Zeller Six A Noble Street, Newbury Park. I was at the last meeting and I did attend the whole other of these meetings to kind of try and understand the life of the neighborhood more than I do as someone who just lives down the block and someone who's not involved in very complicated planning. And Robert, what he just said about the extreme concern about letting us proceed without more of our say in what means for Newbury Park. It's planning. And I want for there to be our voice in the planning, not just a developer who's trying to maximize profit of the space. That's deeply concerning to me. And at our last meeting, I definitely felt hurt. But then I was leaving the room and there were comments in the back from people who are highly involved in the planning process. No one sitting at the table, but people who are highly involved, they made me feel like the meeting concerns were dismissed. This meeting was just about hearing people that they felt, they felt like they could get their concerns out. And to me, that hurt because this is my neighborhood that's going to be impacted by this. I already can't pull out of my driveway safely sometimes, and my kids can't be on their bikes and walking safely in this area. So anything that lets us keep this as a safe residential area in the surrounding neighborhoods is very important to me. I've been told through casual conversations, and correct me if I'm wrong, that some of the planning around the roads and the intersections in this area is very difficult to change because of the state nature of that intersection. So my concern lies in, yeah, we're planning parking. Parking is only a tiny part of the problem, it's the traffic. So what can we do to make it safe to be in this area if we don't have a control over the intersections? I'm bounded by two very unsafe intersections right now. And I'm told we can't really change to make save for the people who live. And there are very residential neighborhoods just a few blocks away from this. So in order to satisfy and get us in the state, state harbor zone, I'm not willing to sacrifice those residential neighborhoods. And my hardest part about this is this is based on a transit center that buses don't really run. My husband used to take transportation to work out of that bus station down the street. And some of the bus companies don't run. You can't get to the airport coming out of this. So what is the planning that fits with this being the safe, safe harbor status that we're using it for? I understand it comes under that. But are we truly basing this on traffic management and transportation that actually exists? Or are we trying to use that area as a loop? It gets us into the safe harbor zone at the sacrifice of the safety of the residents around it. That's my concern as a local resident who lives around this. It's a struggle already, and I want us to be part of the plan. We don't want a developer to maximize profits at the sacrifice of the people who live there already. Thank you for listening again, and thank you for having the public at these meetings. And I'm very impressed by the thoughtful conversation I'm hearing at the table tonight. So I appreciate that concern.
Thank you.
Good evening, Julia Walker, thirteen Eagle Street. So last time I was here, you heard me speak about communities directing for housing and my general support for taking strategic and strategic transformative action. I think most of the people in this room have expressed that support. Understand that there's a real need for having education. So I'm not going to reiterate all that. I do want to take a pause here and just think about what we're rushing to try to do. I do think we need to try to think more holistically about this area. I think there's already a development discussion happening, and I know we're feeling pressure to respond to that. But I don't know how much we can control that in a rush from the sort of happening for that specific. I think we need to take a step back and think more holistically about the whole area. Let the development agreement process go forward on a parallel track. I know it's not ideal, I think it's more realistic. And then we'll, we'll have a chance, a community to come together and think about the goals and vision for the area, rather than trying to pigeonhole zoning, one part of this whole area. I'm a planning professional, I write zoning, interpret zoning, and I find this zoning drafted, as drafted in front of me tonight, very hard to understand. It reference, it feels like it's been sort of jigsawed from other parts of the ordinance. No offense to anybody who's written other parts of the ordinance, I know the practitioners do their best. But I just don't really understand what the point of this zoning is in reading it. I think we have a clear vision of what we want to try to achieve. And, and it's just, to me, as, as, again, as a plain professional, I don't understand it. I don't really see the vision here, let alone the people who implement it or the people who live around it and trying to interpret. So my, my, what I'm encouraging you to do tonight is, is, is think about that parallel track. There's an active development proposal that's being considered by the administration. There's conversations around that, you have an idea of what they want to do. Let that conversation continue, but then take a step back, think about this whole area and craft zoning that maybe includes, includes design review, includes pedestrian considerations, that thinks about our overall goals, that allows our community to give input into that. And do that with technical assistance. We have a technical assistance grant from the state. Use that, use the professional guidance. But don't rush to pass something for this little corner of the broader area just because you're feeling that you need to take action. I think, I think you can be more strategic about what you're using. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a little comment on this? People's on here.
Owen Smith, would you like to address the point of the outage?
Yep, can you hear me?
We're not hearing you. Looks like your mic is running, but we're not getting any audio.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, you appear to be unmuted on your end, but we're not getting any audio. We'll have the call-in number if you want.
Okay.
I'm being muted?
It would be coming out of the dial line, yeah.
I cycled through it again, can you hear me?
Owen, can you hear us again?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Kevin. The always, was.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know what's going on, I, the transcript was working. But Owen Smith, one seventy-five story avenue, Newbury Park. You know, basically, you know, zoning's balancing property owners' rights with the needs of the community. And, you know, there's some lessons learned we can have from the Colby Farm Development from four years ago that I think we can apply here. Looking at the proposed site plan, you know, the traffic circulation at the site isn't going to change much. That intersection right there at Haji's is going to exist. And, you know, right now, we don't really have the tools in our toolbox to compel the developer to pay to put a traffic signal there. That's another discussion to have with our state reps in the State House about changing what local zoning could require of developers. But in the meantime, you know, we do need to look at the future economic growth that we'd have from this facility, the added tax revenue, and we can balance that to ensuring our infrastructure meets the needs of the future. You know, we've had discussions about water and sewer, charging higher connection fees. You know, we could charge higher permitting fees to cover some of these costs that private entities would have, that the city has to bear for their development. But in the big picture, you know, if we let this get tied up in litigation and delay it, you know, the city is losing out on tax revenue. And, you know, a lot of the city councilors that are talking about trying to slow this down and put brakes on this process are the first ones to complain about, you know, our tax rate going up. So what, how do we sustain our city without growth? If you don't grow, you gotta put a heavier burden on the residents living here. So I really think we need to look at the big picture here and realize that bringing in people to our community, raising our tax levy, you know, from new development, and, you know, covering some of those expenses right now to sustain it is an important thing to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. In the case, nobody else wants to be heard on this, we will close the public private period. I'll bring it back to the city councilors in a second.
Well, I think you would like to hear, as we also pressed and stated, we would, you know, hearing the work of this. And if we would like to have the hand written that you all. Do you can, so we can give you the word. Well, we will continue to have.
Do you want to close the hearing as you're excited?
Yes.
Motion to close the hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then the planning board, if you wanted to see, close the public hearing and then deliberate about. Maybe what we should do is figure out where you get that opinion on the subject. Give you the next meeting, I think that's, that will be.
What's your next?
The sixth.
Sure, I can work together, then we can review it.
I might take all of them also. Okay.
Our next. If we wanted to review it, get you to, after the sixth, it would have to be a Thursday. We, we're going to bring it up. Be our first meeting. Or we can just keep our regularly scheduled meeting and handle it.
I unfortunately have a flight to do.
Okay, so you'll, you'll take your, it's stuff, your opinions, your stuff. Sorry, lack of a good word. We'll take your written opinion from your meeting on November the sixth. We'll bring it into our committee and we'll discuss it on November nineteen, and we'll bring it out.
You guys can start meeting now.
Okay, could I motion then to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing?
Okay, any, any discussion, all in favor? So what we'll do is we'll something for the meeting on the sixth, which one we will adopt. Okay, next item on your agenda is another joint public hearing on the ordinance related to the subject. And your presentation, do you?
Yes, do you want to, we go up there?
Well, it might make sense.
Well, it might make sense. The audio is playing.
Okay, I can speak loud. Although I'm very short, so get down with me. Yeah, so thank you. I think what I was hoping to do, you know, this is our second discussion on this element, and I was really hoping to get into some of the policy conversation. So the things I, that I think the sponsor and I would like to talk about a little bit about a recap, going through again the purpose, why are we doing this, and recap kind of what we heard at the first hearing. The second piece is the legal guidance, so it's great to have attorney North here because I think that was the outcome from the meeting. We're having some critical kind of items clarified, discussed, and, and really understood as we move ahead with how we're going to do the final here. Permit and review triggers, I think those are really important aspects to understand as we try to, you know, create that vision of that, what this will look like for ADUs in single-family lots. And then hoping then we can all talk about a little bit like the plan review options or site plan review. That was an area that I know is going to prompt for clarification and understanding. And then finally follow comment, and then I, I think the sponsor and I would like to continue the hearing on this one. We are not as much in a hurry on, you know, we just want to get it right. So for us, the intention is to start the policy conversation. I'd like to ask the planning, the planning and development chair, that we actually all feel like we did with the PPOD, that we have a committee discussion, so we could actually go through some of the ordinance and clarifications and amendments as a, as a body of the council, and then come back to here in this forum and kind of continue and finalize what our thoughts are around the work. So just to get started, really quickly on the review of the purpose again, the next slide, this was actually really a compelling story. We actually just approved Monday, or Tuesday night, yesterday, the city council on the health and production plan. And I really just wanted to hone in on a very interesting breakdown of housing in our city. This is from 2020 versus the number of occupants in housing and the number of bedrooms in housing units. And I think what you'll see here is 66% of the homes in Newburyport are occupied by one to two people. And 13% of the units in Newburyport are studio one bedroom. So what that tells us is that we really do have mismatch in the size of homes and the size of housing units. You know, we wonder how do we get here, why are we dealing with this issue in terms of creating smaller housing? This is one of the opportunities, which is why within the housing production plan in 2013 that we revised our in-law apartment ordinance from the eighties to actually allow excessive dwelling units as residential. So this kind of gives a little kind of lay of the land of why we are, because the situation we are here is very important. And yes, the state has now kind of come forward with regulations, and we all feel like, oh, another state mandate, and we're being told by the state to do something. Well, there's a reason, because communities have not been moving the new. So now on the next slide, I just want to recap from our October 2nd meeting that the current zoning for in-law permits, I want to emphasize, is from the 1980s, it's outdated, and it'll be unenforceable after February 2nd and I fear. Adopting ADU regulations can benefit homeowners and also address the gap in smaller sized housing needs. For us, the proposed ADU amended ordinance was structured around state regulations, but this final bullet's important. Policy decision has to balance the need of more rental units, but we also want to retain character of residential neighborhood. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish and why policy decisions that we're hoping to start tonight will help us. The next, the next one now, we'll get right into the details with the legal guidance. And I could start with it, but I also want to acknowledge Director Port has been coordinating with the attorney. So maybe I could let you just take this on here and we can just get into it. Okay.
Yeah, so again, we have attorney North here, thank you. I was going to just sort of summarize briefly for folks and several, some of the salient points that attorney North had spoken to in two communications that she's now given to the city council and planning board in relation to the zoning ordinance. One of which was a question, the first one here, just running through the, just the list. One was whether or not the state legislature in using the term "single-family zoning district" was referring to really the title of a district or what was going on in those districts. And in essence, the state legislature, the interpretation here is that, and I think is certainly correct in my view, is that because there are so many districts across the Commonwealth, they're titled different things. There's multiple districts in each community that are allowed single-family, that the legislature is really saying anywhere where a single-family is allowed, any district in which a single-family is allowed. So we have several districts in the city, some of which are with the acronyms here, CON, meaning conservation, agricultural district, the R1, R2, R3, those are residential districts. Then those are the types of districts where this accessory dwelling unit allowance that the state requires now, where that would apply. And this is just the baseline of what the state requires, the cities and towns can go beyond that. But that's sort of one of those baseline questions for interpretation. And I obviously defer to Carrie's, if you'd like to stand in any point and correct me anything or supplement. Principal dwelling, that was another question. What is meant by principal dwelling? That came up, I guess, because a couple of reasons. One is just, you know, the legislature in prepping language, relatively short language, trying to cover a lot of ground applying across the Commonwealth, but also recognizing the way that each community defines things slightly differently and looking at our on-zoning ordinance. Clarification under the statute of what was meant by principal dwelling and how that might apply here. So in essence, principal dwelling under the statute, the interpretation here, and it applies to a single-family dwelling. So the state mandate being a mandatory requirement or allowance at the local level for accessory dwelling units, that that really applies to a single-family dwelling only. It doesn't mean that a community can't go beyond that, I like other instances, two family, for instance. But here, the statute is really speaking specifically to that scenario, and that's what is, is the mandatory requirement across the Commonwealth. The other, third question was essentially whether or not the, the way that the statute works is there's a parking allowance, a requirement that you can have for one space per accessory dwelling unit, but you can't require that parking space locally if you, when the property restriction is within a mile radius of, of what they consider to be sort of transit facilities. So in this case, our instance, that would be the MBJ commuter rail station. And there was a question about because of the use of the term "bus station" in the statute, whether that would apply to what we hear called the Ticom Street parking garage, but was originally constructed with MBRTA funds, Regional Transit Authority, and is utilized by them, and actually has their logo on it, is utilized as one of their, their station stops. So in essence, the question there was, does it make sense of the best practice to incorporate that now in the zoning and let folks know what that expectation is there? Did the downtown, it can do the train station, for instance, as a, or sort of that area, understandably. But that is a transit location for that purpose, rather than we've been remaining silent on it, leaving it ambiguous and properly having the state say, yes, we intended that to be one of them because it's part of the regional transit authorities, you know, simply that they've utilized and funded. So in this instance, the guidance here was that it would be a reasonable best practice to incorporate that now in the ordinance rather than maybe get silent, given the, the way that the statute is structured. Defer to attorney North if you want to add any figures. And that gives that expectation here that some of these other elements, which are a little bit more involved, would be discussed at later point. In essence, four and five that you see listed here have more to do with the way in which the permitting is done for the accessory dwelling unit and the degree to which we can regulate it and how that is done essentially. But that's a little bit more involved, so I can do the intended to discuss that in just five.
So, yeah.
Just, I've been doing a lot of homework, so mostly for my fellow councilors as well as many members of the public who are interested. I'm just going to, can you just go back to the slide?
Yeah.
So number one here is saying a single-family zoning district. We have R1, which is the only, only single-family zoning district in Newburyport. But what we're, what the interpretation of the law is, is that anywhere where there is a single-family home allowed, where there's more than one allowance, you can add an ADU. So it's more broadly applicable in our community, which, which may be interpreted as a good thing, but something to be aware of. Number two, on the principal dwelling, this is something where we have interpreted in the current post ordinance language to allow an ADU where you may have a multi, a two-family home. You may be able to add what would essentially be a third unit to that property. That is a policy and decision that's up for consideration. The last one is pretty cut and dry. So we have, we have, we have isolated the Ticom Garage and a bus station because that is what the law tells us we have to do. What we have done is we've specified that location, so we can't have people claiming that a bus stop in the bus station. So that, I believe it's that. And then to the yellow language, which we will get into, the top three, we're a little bit more straightforward and cut and dry. The yellow stuff, we're going to go into a little bit more detail and show some examples that will hopefully help when we get to the policy questions around that legal guidance. Make it a little easier for us to know what we're talking about from some of the, the language and, and options that we have available.
So can we go back to the, I, I actually want to just get agreement, we could pause here. Yeah, so I'd love to hear from fellow councilors here as well as the planning board. In our opinion, as, as the sponsors, we do, for the first one, you know, like we, like my co-sponsor said, single-family zoning district is really R1, if you were to look at just from the use. We had the attorney though tell us that, you know, the state, the, the state kind of guidance does mean anywhere where a single-family is used is allowed by rent. So for us, we feel very comfortable with that interpretation. I want to make sure everyone here is as well. And that's in the table of uses would be that first row, which, I know, I think I put in the. And I added to the appendix here, if people want to see it, what we mean by that. So up, up to folks, it should be there towards the end, maybe. So both scan all the way to the bottom by the appendix.
Yeah, this row right here.
So what we're saying is, so as you can see, R1, and you scan down from R1, you know, there's really no other uses except what, what's a home, a single-family home. But as you just heard, the attorney, our, our legal counsel did agree with like just that whole band of red here. And so that's where the sponsor and I also said for accessory dwelling units would be also permitted. Any discussion on that, or can we assume that they, okay? Am I seeing that?
Right.
The second one, principal dwelling, this one is, I, I would hope to get a little bit more engagement on this one because the current proposed ordinance is a little agnostic, I don't know if that's the right word for it. We don't specify, we really just say the principal dwelling, and we don't specify single-family, two-family. So that was one of the things, but there is a limit of one per lot in the way that the ordinance is written. So if it's a two-family home, only one on that lot. Even though it's owned by two different people, only one of them would be able to do an ADU. The Capitoline, Farmer's, or Court, but that, that is one of the kind of limitations in there. Thoughts from the group?
Just to, just to add to that, a little bit, the reason this is some confusion is because we have this interpretation that the state, the legislature, that principle dwelling to mean a single-family dwelling, or the zoning dwelling includes single-family, two-family, three-family, etc. So our, our word dwelling in Newburyport certainly does not mean a single-family dwelling. So if we were to, so way this, as you say, agnostic, but it's also instantly saying that you can have, the ordinance, proposed ordinance is written, you can have an accessory dwelling unit attached to any type of dwelling. And if you want to be very strict, you can insert the words. That's, that's really the policy.
And it, it would also, so the same lot requirements and dimensional requirements would apply. So if you can imagine, a two-family is generally larger ethically than a, a single-family. So the limitation or the, the applicability will still depend on the ability to put this ADU on a lot in compliance or to receive an exception, which we'll talk more about. But just to sort of spell out that, we wouldn't expect a lot of ADUs to be attached to a two-family home, but that if you had a very large lot, you could fit a third unit, it would still be an ADU, would not be able to be sold as a condo, be subject to all the other requirements. But it would be another rental, you know, home on that property.
If I could, I think this is kind of a point, we covered some of the other. I'm not giving it to you, but the point you just raised, I think everybody should understand is all the dimensional, all the spatial constraints in zoning would still apply. They're not, they're not, they're out the window, they still apply. So all those spatial constraints that we have in place in order to make sure things are comfortable and put in a neighborhood, those things still apply regardless of whether or not it makes a small unit or a lot of mistakes.
So thoughts from people on keeping it as it is?
Yeah, so going back to the underlying intent of this ordinance is to create more affordable housing, more affordable rental housing. There's a lot of opportunities to increase the number of units if you don't just restrict it to a single. I think, I think there's a, I can think of a lot of instances where you have, you know, two-family, it still means all of the size constraints of that block based by case basis. And that's really the underlying determination of whether an ADU can place there. I think it's, I think it's just artificial to say it's single-family or a multi-family or a two-family. The, the, the real, the real, the, the real criteria for having an ADU is how it fits on the lot. Whether it's a one-family or a two-family. The overriding concern is how that use fit on the lot. If it's a one-family or a two-family, I think it is secondary to how the actual existing unit is located on. So I would encourage a broader definition in our ordinance, not just limits.
And actually, we don't right now, so that's the thing. So our current ordinance, that's the proposed amended version, we don't just say single-family, but from the legal counsel, principal dwelling was just clarified to mean only single-family. And we're not going beyond the state by what we're doing. And, and I just want to make sure that's okay with everyone. I agree with your thought process though, I do. But I want to make sure we, we, we're absolutely up there with everyone here, that this is a little bit beyond the state's intention.
Counselor. Yeah, so, so I agree, and I also agree that the use of language is principal dwelling is clear. I actually have a little bit different take on the other side, it actually, again, with the intent here to be able to build, you know, create more housing in the whole. I'm a little stuck in the fact that if, if I were to live in a two-family and the other side decides to buy, to, to build an ADU first, I just get lost in that, right? So I'd like us to be open to opening the language to allow for the other side. And, you know, I don't exactly have to fix that in here. But I didn't, I, A, I don't think it's fair, and B, I think it goes against the goal of the thing, more house. Yeah, I mean, again, especially if you're, if they're still going to have to live within the, the, the setback constraints and all of those sorts of things. If both sides can do that, I don't know why we would restrict the other side from the.
So you're thinking more of a townhouse?
Yeah, you and I lived in. Yeah, exactly.
I'm considering two-family to be able to solve.
Yeah, no, but I'm thinking. But adequate yards for you and I go, we build an ADU. Be frankly upset if you build an ADU and then.
I was just going to say, the state, going back to the state, but the state law, if you want to have more than one accessory dwelling in a lot, it requires you to allow that special permit. So it provides for that, but it's not an.
Could we not change the language to get as a right?
In effect, I think the statute actually indicates that the second, we require to be a special permit, not as a right. So in this case, the statute turning to finding that, that second one, that is like the problem. Not.
It would make sense, I mean, I think we would want that too. I mean, if you think about, one of the concerns with proliferation and, you know, infill, like unintended infill or small scale infill, whatever you might want to call it, I think special permit triggering for a second ADU on a lot, as a state, that does make sense. But, but it allows for the situation, it's just that they would have to go and, you know, yeah.
Just to respond as well, one thing that's been really helpful to me, coming very new to this subject matter, is to look at some, we're going to take you through a couple of real examples, one of them is my house. You, I think if you can come up with, if you spot an example, Council Pressed, that is sort of the thing that you're describing, we could certainly take a look at that and talk about what the zoning that we proposed would, how that would apply and what exceptions, you know, will be available. So that's been super illuminating, hopefully you'll find it to do.
Anything else on the conversation, because then we can just move on to the next. The number three was best practice, we could take that amongst councilors. That was a specific question too, from some of the councilors, we'll get to that then. Hope we just move on. Great, I will turn this over to, I think, Andy or Jennifer, whoever.
Yeah, sure, I don't want to speak of this, so.
Yeah, sure. I don't want to speak of this. So special permit granting authority, just to clarify what the permit process is today and how things typically work. And this goes a little bit to the question of who ends up being the designated permit granting authority for something and whether it's accessory dwelling units or otherwise. But one of the things we often need to consider is who is the permit granting authority that jurisdiction is assigned to. Originally in the zoning ordinance, a lot of things are really were assigned to the zoning board of appeals. Over time, the city has added some permits and some of those newer permits have been assigned to the planning board over time. But there is generally speaking, I think a distinction generally. So this slide is essentially summarizing that. One link to note is that the planning and zoning staff actually are zoning administrators is, we're lucky enough to have it this year this evening, reviews all the billing permits that are issued throughout the city. This is a, and I want to thank the mayor and city council, prior mayor, current mayor, city council of the years, having created this position, I think properly to distinguish zoning decisions from billing commissioner decisions, that's something that takes all our bandwidth on its own. So here we have somebody, a professional, who is always looking at all the permits that are being issued throughout the city and making sure that they're compliant with zoning. So that's something that to know right off the bat, that's irrespective of whether or not something is sent to a board for review. But generally speaking, the two options of boards are the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. And just to summarize briefly, and it's helpful here to understand as we're thinking about what we might assign a new permit jurisdiction authority to, whether it's here or elsewhere, the zoning board of appeals typically has residential districts and what's going on, that small-scale residential that's happening there. One exception to that would be what we call section 6C. We use Roman numerals still. We're going to be changing that, but Roman numerals. So section 6C is really dealing with two separate single-family home structures being given, built on a lot where two families allowed, but not as a two-family structure, two independent single-family homes. So landowner gets a little bit more benefit out of that option there, but there's some exchanges, public benefits are offered in exchange for that. And that's the board's discretion based on the given instance. But that's relatively speaking in anomaly. Most of the, that's a relatively small amount of permitting that's happening over the years. Most of it is properly what is on the appeals. The planning board typically has different qualitative areas. Downtown overlay district was recently, relatively recently assigned as sort of commercial area or mixed-use. Smart growth district, similar in nature down in the train station. And then there are some select uses in the business park that oftentimes subject to site plan review. So it actually kind of makes sense to only send an applicant to one board rather than sending them to a special permit to the ZBA and a site plan rule to the planning board. That can be frustrating and really nonsensical. Then the other thing is, is large-scale residential. So other than that 6C that I mentioned, which is relatively frequent and somewhat of an anomaly in residential districts, it really is the large-scale residential. So those are the subdivisions like Evergreen Commons that we saw, Hobie Farm Lane, Oleo Woods, things like that. Larger scale residential subdivisions, that's something the planning board typically looks at. So, and like I said, section 6C, so not typically generally looking at small-scale residential. And I mentioned that here only because as we talk about ADUs, that's essentially a small-scale residential, it can only be 900 square feet in size anyway, and it's the largest and it's already way structured in the statute, it's accessory to the primary residential use. So again, this is really extending off of the singular, you know, residential use that's already happening there in that context. Just some general context for how things are done right now. The proposed ADU amendment right now, as is drafted right now, under the provisions, would assign that authority to the planning board, the special permit granting authority status to the planning board, with the presumption that they might also be looking at segment approval in some instances.
Yeah. And the reason for that as sponsors, you know, as I think 6C is what, you know, where you have a two-family structure on a lot or two-families a lot. And, and part of it was thinking, well, is this like a 6C? But I, I, I see the difference, you know, with the small-scale ownership, probably is not a consideration with ADUs. The owner does not have to be on site, but what the ADU has to, it could be allowed to be rental or it allows for it to be rented, I should say it that way. The she sheds and the man caves, those could still happen, but.
But most notably cannot be sold off.
Yes, that's the good point. You're right. Whereas in the 6C, that is exactly what happens.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a very good distinction. So I want to get the planning board and my fellow councilor, yeah.
So I would advocate strongly that it goes to the zoning board. I think that's exactly where it belongs. Small-scale residential. It's a the planning board by its nature requires more for the applicant requires more expenses to be, to be, to go through your planning process. I think somebody, say, individual could probably get through the zoning board of appeals without an engineer, without that, without an attorney. And so that's why I think that it belongs with the zoning board.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you. Planning board members, do you guys agree with that?
I agree. I think the ZBA has more familiarity with the neighborhoods, scale of projects that are being discussed. So I agree.
I guess my feeling also is that a lot of the special permits that might come out of this for, for attached accessory dwelling will be of the same type that would be for accessory garage or something like that. It could be like special permit non-conformity and that type of thing. So these are things that's only one.
And like variance, they would get the variance.
So I think it's, it's more streamlined.
Thank you. We're just prison along here. Okay. Let's keep going. I think there's this now, oh yeah, now we get to look at examples. Whose house is that?
We've been lucky enough, sponsors have advised that a lot of these are happening. It's still dimensionally and specifically what can happen on lots.
So this slide up here is actually to speak to accessory structures generally, not accessory dwelling units. And like it's just to start to say that as somebody an administrator, I do review every project that comes before me for compliance with setbacks, with lot coverage and send it to the appropriate board based upon what I see relative to the design standards that are or accessory structure, be it a garage, a she shed, a workshop, something that is, you know, associated with the primary structure, but not an ADU. This illustration shows the build box, as we call it for the setback lines. And then it shows freestanding accessory structure that could be built. If it needs setbacks and it needs the lot coverage, you just go get a building permit. There's no additional review process. You see a lot of those on these larger lots that meet the design standards. Sometimes people would come in and they'd say, you know, I really can't put it right there because there's a giant boulder or wetland in the middle of my lot where I might put it. And so I need to locate it where this red box is. And they come in for a variance from the ZBA or something like that. But again, these are, one is by right, the one requires a ZBA special for variance, but that's the end of it. There's not an additional level of site plan and review.
If I could, part of the context, I think it's helpful, but if I could is partly because of the spatial relationship where these building permits can go is defined by the setbacks that we're looking at here. So as we think about site plan review, we think about, you know, does that mean that we're talking about where the building footprint goes? Probably not, because those things are already adequately defined by the zoning, you know, judicial standards in the fill box that we see here.
Hey, can I ask accessory structures, garages, carriage houses, pool houses?
Sheds, anything that is customarily associated with a primary dwelling unit or dwelling units. It, it doesn't mean, I mean, an accessory structure, you might have a personal workshop in it, but that doesn't mean you're running your business out of it. That becomes a different type of use. You might have a bonus room out there, you know, where you watch movies. But you can't put, at least under our current zoning, you can't actually put an in-law apartment out there. You cannot put a complete living unit. The, as you presented it, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance says that if you were to take an accessory structure that's built as a garage and put a complete dwelling unit in it, that would be characterized. Now all of a sudden it has to comply with the rules for the accessory dwelling unit and not those just the baseline accessory dwelling, accessory structure. So here we have two lots, one, one on the left, although they're shown at the same size, one on the left is probably four times the size.
We did this just to make sure you could see it on the screen.
But to be, you know, to, to look at this, we wanted to talk about the types of ADUs that exist. And two of them are either attached, they're called attached or interior. And the blue box is showing one that would be created entirely within the space of the existing dwelling unit. Then the orange box is completed expansion there up. These would all have to be under the minimum square footage as allotted by the state statute. But that said, if you were to make an expansion that's illustrated by the orange box on either of these properties and it complies with all of the dimensional controls, it could be made. The red box that you see represents on both properties represents the detached ADU. It's a standalone unit, a fleet dwelling unit. The, this too would have to meet the dimensional controls, but it has to meet the dimensional controls for the primary dwelling unit that is associated with some of its one-family property, it has to meet the one-family standard. If it's a two-family property, it has to meet the two-family standards. Now that's true of lot coverage as well. And as you can see, there's a lot more room or open space on the left-hand image. On the right-hand image, all of a sudden it becomes really hard to squeeze freestanding unit. And Councilor Bean, I think it was last time, asked, how do we, how do we monitor this sort of dense infill? Figured on the right-hand side. And the answer to that is any additional lot coverage that would go in a lot that's scaled like the one on the right-hand side is going to automatically trigger a special permit for non-conformities reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. Or, or the planning board, depending on what the decision is, but typically it would be the zoning board of appeals. And that, that's going to be the case of most of the properties, you know, that are scaling this, these 4,000 square foot lots and things like that. So there really, there will already be a pretty high level of regulation and review process associated with both the freestanding units and even many of the attached units. Because that attached unit, although it needs dimensional controls, it exceeds the allowable lot coverage in these dense neighborhoods.
And so you're talking the one on the right.
I am talking the one on the right.
Right, because it's already a non-conforming structure.
It's a non-conforming structure. So, so if you were to build on top of it, you're going to be doing an upward extension and that's going to trigger review. If you're going to build behind it where that orange box is, it's going to trigger lot coverage, you know, an exacerbation of a non-conforming lot coverage. So that's going to trigger review. Essentially, anything you put on that property, many properties like this is going to trigger review regardless of the conversation that I think you're going to go to, which is site plan review or not site plan review. And I think in the case on the left, where the red box meets the dimensional controls that are, you know, we, we looked at these carefully, sort of saying this gives enough space to allow, you know, neighbors appropriate setbacks, the massing is controlled by maximum height. So that box could be built, you know, if it were just a standard accessory structure like a garage, that could just be built without site plan review. And it is up to you guys here to discuss whether or not you think that simply locating a accessory unit within that structure is enough to sort of trip that threshold and say it needs to be a different.
Any questions from both on that element? If you want to follow, go on, anyone?
It's, it's not a question, but it's actually an observation that I think you just clarified. So in the case of basically 90% of the lots, the lot says they're all going to require a special permit, which is, which is a much higher level of discretionary review in the site plan. So you're going to, in the case of those types of lots, and I think we're not quite at that discussion yet, but just leaping ahead, in the case of those types of lots, site plan review doesn't add anything because you've already got a special permit.
I'm not going to, we currently don't do that kind of review for a similar expansion that doesn't contain an ADU. A similar expansion to a one or two-family home would get quite a high level of review simply through the ZBA special.
I can speak to that, having seen numerous sites and how things work for years. I mean, that is to your point, it would definitely not add anything because the special permit of summary is much greater, has much more discretion in it and helping resolve one way or the other, whether it's approved or not and all that. So yes, the site plan review would not really add anything in those.
I will say that the initial review that would be done for any project before we even get to what board level review is going to look at is parking accommodated? Is the height consistent with zone or the setbacks? So all of that happens regardless of what board anyone here thinks that they should go to.
Okay. No, I think that's helpful. I think from our perspective, the site plan review detached, you know, and I think we can, we'll get to it a little bit later. A lot of it has to do with massing, privacy, but we could talk about it. So I think this kind of leads to the good kind of, I guess, segue into the next area. So if you want to. I think this was the other thing, because as we're trying to figure out, okay, site plan review, we hear it, we know it happened. This was helpful. I think Director Port for putting together and Jennifer Blanchet about what are the current areas that we have planning and only planning board's the only, I guess, entity that does site plan review. It's not something that the ZBA does, it's just the planning board. And here are the examples of currently what are, what triggers site plan review. And did you want to talk through those?
Yeah, I would just mention briefly a little bit, like we spoke to you a second ago, you know, as the councilor mentioned and as we spoke to a few minutes ago. This is something that's required for larger scale projects typically, so five or more units. So one of the questions here is, is we have a sort of an imbalance here between calling for site plan review possibly for an accessory dwelling unit to a primary residential with accessory to that primary, where we don't require for two-family, three-family, four, we get the plus units, then we require it again. So, you know, what makes sense here in context, that, that might be raised here as sort of a question, but generally speaking, as currently the ordinance works, it's multi-family, five units or more. We've got this commercial adjustment for uses, thousands of square feet or more. You know, in this case, the, the ADU itself with accessory dwelling unit going to 900 square feet. And the difference, the second piece of this slide is just the difference between major and minor review. There might have been some misunderstanding or misconception before. Minor site plan review does not, and the ordinance require a budget notice. It does require a public board meeting without review, but it does not require a budget notice for the major project, which typically that section is largely dealing with these, as the planning board has dealt with it over the years, maybe larger, you know, projects in the city that are happening. And there's a reason, because of the larger scale impacted those projects to expect another public hearing, budget notices, so what? The question here is, you know, on the scale, what is appropriate scale to push it?
So if we, if we continue on the, on the ZBA track, you just mentioned that in areas where the lot coverage is impacted, guns is special. With a special permit, there is a budget indication, correct?
Correct.
So sometimes you get tripped up with any of those components, you're going to get full of budget review, which is, which for me, again, puts me further in the camp, the ZBA. Whereas we, there would be site plan review necessary. Cause that's what's up. But, but most of the most of the lots in the report are going to be, have some impact to the lot coverage unless they're enormous and then, then the budget should be that's the loss of the within the confinement without any, any sub.
And I would also say, you point out here, the difference between major and minor is whether we have a budget or not. There's also whether you have a budget or not. Because with a minor, minor site plan review, which is what is currently written in the, in the documents, you know, you don't have the kind of ability for the public to come to a meeting, they come and meet. And so the major, major site plan review is similar to this kind of thing. They don't have the, during the, and so the major, major site areas similar to this kind of meeting. But that's not being proposed, that would be way outside the, 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 the. So, you know, your point, again, if you're, the great majority of those lots in, in the denser parts of the city will require, likely require a special permit. And, and so to my way, site plan review doesn't add anything. And it, it would mean going to a community board.
Well, let's move to the next because we're, we're kind of honing in onto our last, I think our last slide is this one, right? This is the last one?
Yes.
Yep.
So here's the policy business. Yeah, go on.
Just to add a little bit, so thank you, Counselor Ray, helped us, he teed this up perfectly. But one of the things that we glossed over several slides back in the yellow box that had words in it, those words were also part of the legal guidance we received from the city solicitor. Two of the pieces of that that are in question, they're a little bit less cut and dry than the top three that we talked about, involve objective standards, which, you know, our intention had been to provide, you know, a public process for attached unit and some standards and things. However, the legal guidance, which Attorney North will correct me if I get wrong, is, you know, includes some question about what are objective standards that we thought we might accomplish through a site plan review versus what are some objective standards we as counselors might include within the ordinance that would be in, in line with what the state statute has seen in allowable from, in the state statute that could be accomplished through a ZBIA process, for example. And then, you know.
Oh, if we don't have something.
Yeah, the second one was, oh, site plan review specifically could be interpreted as a disparate treatment of a single-family unit where you can build a house, it doesn't have to go through site plan review, but you want to build an ADU and we're imposing this more stringent review process, where we might be able to accomplish that through this ZBIA, as Counselor Wright has kind of talked about. So sorry to take it away, I just wanted to make sure we didn't gloss over some of that legal.
No, that, that's great, thank you. So our, our last, you know, just to kind of wrap it up and really was, and as sponsors, we're really open to just getting it right. Going back to that last point when I kicked us off is, you know, balancing, you know, we're trying to balance the, the need for creating the housing, but we also want to balance what does it mean for neighborhoods? And, and so it was really helpful for us to ask ourselves, what's the intent? What do we want to make sure a plan review, that, you know, when you talk about site plan, you really look at the site itself, is this a viable place, a building? But what's the intent with a plan review when you're developing a detached ADU? Which is what we honed in on for the site plan. And for me, and I think for the post-pot, so you know, the privacy element, you know, screening seemed to be an area that seemed also addressed, it wasn't outside the norm of being done. I think when we were watching some other communities and trying to tackle this issue, the placement of windows and balconies, you know, those are a couple of them. But I want to know from others here too, and, and other counselors, and I, Counselor Granis is out there too, but, but you know, what are some things that a plan review would give us, you know, with being ward counselors? And, you know, what else are the things that we want to make sure, like a plan review standards should have? You know, then we could talk about the, the, the agent or the, the board. You know, we have planning board right now, number one, is how we currently have the proposed amended ordinance is that, you know, per legal review of a current SPR, site plan review criteria, which we've been told by the legal council to be subjective. But right now, that's where we have planning board with existing SPR criteria and standards. We could also have for the planning board, go and edit what we put together and make them less subjective and try to make them objective, you know, edit it in the ordinance. Or the third one is just like how we have the planning and zoning staff that we could codify in the bylaw here and spell it out specifically, that detached ADUs must do this and create that. It's codified. Now, who's the one that's going to check it? Well, it's the planning zoning staff, it's Jennifer Blanchet, you know, that's another pack. So those are the three, I don't know if we're missing any, but this is again, the policy aspect that we're looking forward to hearing from the planning board. We do want to do our own, I think, planning involvement committee too, to get all the councils there.
So you're looking for feedback on the green, the green text?
And what else stands to that listing green? I mean, we had things like excessive noise, which we do have a noise ordinance, and also Attorney North was like, what? And then some of the other things we, we also had, it has to be comparable to the neighborhood, like other properties, you know, what's comparable. You know, we, we kind of, you know, we had something with exterior stairs, like if you're going to have stairways going upstairs, like think of a garage with a unit on top. And if you have stairs, then you should, they, they have to be enclosed. You cannot have exposed exterior stairs. And actually, I walked by a neighborhood where there is one with exterior exposed stairs, but it's interesting that, that increases the massing when you enclose it. So we have to think, you know, what's our intent? Are we trying, I know massing is a big thing, we don't want like excessively big structures. So we have to be careful what we're putting in here and the consequences.
If I could offer there, just again, just, you know, the planning director seeing some of the processes that we, you know, we see over time, what works with other, what makes sense with other, obviously operating based on my ability, what I think might be helpful, not to say that I do myself, but as zoning administrator, want to take on more work, for instance, but to make a distinction perhaps, for example, between two and three. I do think it's worth just, you know, understanding or asking the question, if the requirements themselves have to be objective regardless of who is doing that, this is basically going back to what the statute was intending, what the legislature intended, and local guidelines from the state, I'm sure. If the guidelines that have to be violated, whatever the criteria standards are, have to be objective. Similar to the question that Rick had asked earlier, what, what do we gain by having a site plan review?
It would not that specific.
The primary.
So I guess I have a different take on it. And so, um, so I guess my, I think about what standards, what, what objectives concerns the standards might be trying to address, I would think they would have to do with any and just any impact on the your living neighbors and imagining a two-story carriage house that is not occupied. It's just a two-story carriage house that is converted to an accessory building that was a family unit. Um, I think that's a very different impact. The body of property, especially if that existing carriage house is right up against the property. It doesn't mean setback. Let me just finish. The, so it's, so it means for setback. I think it, it's fair to say, uh, at least to consider having a screening, some type of screening for the new residential unit that you're creating. Um, you know, if we don't even allow that, then there's no point in having any standards. Really, that's, that's really the, seems to me, the privacy issue is the one issue that could be a concern for a new residential unit.
I think there's two scenarios. One is, uh, if it's the diagram where you meet all of the setback requirements and it's purely out of right.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
If, if, if it's a special permit, then everything mitigation measures should be looked at on case. Okay, I think it's two different things. What I was saying is in the baseline situation, I don't think you should apply. If, if you don't meet the baseline standards, then every situation is different. I mean, we're.
Very helpful, so.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, sorry, I think to your point Andy about, you know, the quality of the review, it starts with a great quality review and filter of what's being requested. And then the zoning board appeals because all the skills they need to review what they're talking, what we're talking about here. And then if it gets kicked back as a, a special permit requirement, then that would naturally flow. I think that makes great sense. It's not overly redundant. It, it doesn't, it gives someone a, a better shot at getting this, you know, evaluated before they spend any money or they do any of all those other things that they have to do. So I think it's a great idea.
We're, we're, we're set and.
You can open up.
Yes.
Anybody who wants to speak to this, uh, the issue, this proposed amendment, please come forward and give your address. Say your piece. You're good. Okay, we're close enough. Okay, why?
Is there anyone online?
Not.
You had mentioned, you wanted to continue the public hearing.
Well, um, I, I, I guess this went very smoothly. So I, um, I think we're okay with it. Yeah. Or continuing.
So if I may, if I may make it, you know, give you some context. I think it's appropriate now for, for us to take the feedback, as the council, take the feedback we had tonight and move into a, a planning and development conversation similar to what we did with, with the other. So I would recommend on our part, if we close our portion of the public hearing, if any would want to follow their process. Yeah. But if by closing it now for us, we just move it to, to the city council and local have units for public input as we move forward in the planning.
Getting the report.
Perfect. Yeah, we're good with that.
Yes.
So your motion is.
It's so.
Oh, wait, wait, one second. I guess I, sorry, excuse me, I'll stand up. Was wondering, I thought the original comment and, and in parallel to how you did the P-Pod was to come back with some revisions for further comment from the planning board and perhaps your committee before you closed. And so, not that I'm trying to keep you all in public hearing for too many nights, uh, but that's what I thought you were thinking about doing and, and.
We were, and, and actually, I'm glad you reminded me because we are going to come with a revised survey. And, and I think that does make sense to have once more in the public and get time to respond. And, and thank you for reminding, and we did that also with the P-Pod. There was a revision and that way the public and you guys can see how we restructured it. So, and again, we're not on a major time crunch with this one, so let's, I, I do like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Yeah.
And, and I think that we had been envisioning a hearing on the twentieth, November twentieth.
Yeah. November twentieth?
Was.
Yeah, I think it.
We were skipping one meeting.
Yes, we're skipping meetings and that we could make that.
Oh, and that work in. Did you, did that meeting date work for your.
Well, we are closing this on the twentieth. You'd have a meeting in between that, but we would not be, we would not be voting in that meeting for you all. Not be.
And you, you push your real key part here.
No, we'll keep ours.
For him, so he will be there.
Yes, yes, we have. Schedules are now.
Yep.
Yes, continue some of that.
Yes.
So if you like the motion to continue.
You have all those in favor of continuing the public hearing on April twentieth, aye aye.
And save for the planning board. Okay, so motion is second to continue to November twentieth. The opposed.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye, aye.
Again. Um, this is so much fun, but I think I'm gonna stop.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the city of Blue Report, fifty-nine Low Street, major site plan review. Lauren.
Thank you. Now, it's been a long night, looking for a presentation as short as possible, but thank you. I'm Kim Turner, uh, manager of projects in the mayor's office, and we're here tonight um, to do the site plan review, major site plan review for fifty-nine Low Street. Next slide, thanks. Uh, I have our entire design team here with me tonight. We have Scott Hall, the EPA architect, we have Diane Gag, the city engineer, we have Lee Hamerall, the director of DPS online. Um, so I go through as much of this as I can, and there are questions, um, for anyone on our team or all of the people here tonight. So we'll start with a brief introduction of what were the project and the project details, then we'll leave plenty of time at the end. So just to give you a brief history of this property, um, the project, the property was acquired from the National Guard in twenty twenty-two. Um, it was the former emergency management building for the city of Newbury for two-point-one-seven acre site on Low Street directly across from the Knack Mall and School. The city council approved, um, a zoning amendment in June of this year to allow a community center use within the I-1 industrial zone within five hundred feet of an existing school. That means this parcel, um, now. Um, the wetlands were last flagged in twenty twenty-two. They were confirmed by the conservation commission through an RDA and happy to let you know that on October eighth, we had order conditions, um, approved from the conservation commission for the project as you will see it tonight. Uh, the design concepts for the rec center were developed with input from many stakeholders, including, um, the Department of Urban Recreation Services, the administration, um, parents in the community, community members and council members through, um, many, many meetings and public presentations and hearings as well. Uh, right now, Redpoint of the city council is looking for hard bid pricing in order to decide how to proceed, which is why we have, um, a notice of intent to get through the permitting stage that we can issue as per bid, um, and get that pricing with the city council to determine how to. Next slide, this is just the, uh, how the approved wetlands doesn't have a lot of information on it, but you can see that, uh, a big section of the south and western portion of the, uh, is restricted, um, through wetlands and public zones. And again, we have that work conditions approved by the conservation commission. Next slide is, I'm actually going to go to the following slide.
Oh, sure. By the way, just to say, you got me to say next.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'll give you a broad overview of what we're planning to do here, and then we'll break it down into sections for your review, and I can go into further detail. But overall, we're looking to repurpose the existing building, which is that gray rectangle at the top of the plan here. That's the old emergency management building, um, it's fifty-seven hundred square feet. We're looking to repurpose that for office and program space for the department. Uh, we're keeping the existing, the MU walls inside the building and just reusing the spaces as they are with some, um, uh, and some walls, which I'll have to go over in a few minutes for programming space. Um, we're then proposing to add a modular gym, which is that angled portion of the building, um, as well as an interstitial space, that new addition, which will contain both the lobby and all the toilets that are required by code. So really trying to minimize the addition and use as much of the existing building, um, with the modular gym to, to encompass all the programming needs. Uh, the parking we are showing here is twenty-three spaces, including two accessible spaces. We've, um, designed the configuration of the parking to have a one-way circulation, vehicular circulation, which allows for ease of drop-off for parents dropping children and picking children up from the facility. Um, and then additionally, on the rest of the site, we have a rear courtyard space, which contains perhaps sport court, a patio space, the shade structure, um, and primarily as much open lawn, unprogrammed open lawn as for children to run inside. Additionally, at the top of the, um, drawing there, you can see a linear place space that is directly connected to, um, an internal space that is dedicated towards the younger children, so they have their own completely fenced-in place space, um, on the northern side of the thing. Um, and while the one that does the greater detail, but we also have, uh, safety improvements for traffic, um, including some curb extensions, stripings, signage, and across the beacon, which I'll, I'll show off. This is what I'm gonna be proposing there. Um, next slide, please. So you go to the next one. Yeah, thank you. The landscape offered here was, um, pretty important to the, the design and concept overall as they have been reviewed. Number one, all of the existing trees on the site will remain. There's not, there's not existing trees on this site per se, but immediately to the north, there's a pretty dense canopy of existing trees that will all remain, um, in this scenario. Using five red oaks along Low Street that will separate the parking from Low Street. And then additionally, another red oak and two laran dogwood, um, to satisfy the parking, um, block planting of one tree for ten contiguous spaces. Um, additionally to those canopy trees, we're proposing an additional nine trees in the back of the building, plus, um, pretty good plant list of native shrubs and hermannials, um, both at the stormwater, planted stormwater basin, as well as the rain garden and that existing, um, yeah, right there at the shameless fence. Um, this is, the, the planting here are really meant to prevent foot traffic into the wetland, but also improve ecological functionality and the stormwater treatment of the site. So that was a mitigation effort that the conservation commission have reviewed with us. And then finally, there's three arbor by the planted around the dumpster space at the end of that hammerhead there to try to block and buffer, um, the dumpster from, you know. Next slide is. I'm actually gonna have you flip to this one. So, um, as I mentioned before, this is a blow up of the traffic and safety, um, uh, improvements that we're proposing here. We had a consultant T E C take a look at this and provide, um, exceptional recommendations for improving, um, vehicular and pedestrian safety here. So a few things I'd like to point out. Number one, we're proposing a new curb extension on the Knack Mall inside of Low Street, um, that will both shorten the distance of the crosswalk to get directly to this facility, but also truncate that parent drop-off bay that's, uh, right there adjacent to the Knack Mall as well. All of the crosswalks will have acceptable curb ramps. There's actually those, those yellow boxes you're seeing there. Um, there are six of them. We're also proposing new striping along the frontage of the property, um, and most importantly, a new overhead and beacon, um, that will be pushed by the control. T E C noted that the striping should be twenty-four inches wide for the stop lines and stop signs near the pedestrian hybrid beacon and a twelve-inch, uh, stop line and stop sign of control, as well as additional signage for do not enter information and school. And then the next slide, please. I'm gonna have you flip to the one after, just kidding. Thank you. Uh, so just to review the parking again, as I said, there's twenty-three parking spaces here, including two handicap accessible that are close to the existing building. Um, we felt in discussions with the department that the twenty-three spaces were going to satisfy the needs of the department and their program, and the reason being there's three primary times that, um, easy switch over of users in this building. In the early morning, we have a call for early bedtime for the children that are earlier than, you know, kind of their preschool age. Those programs are limited to twelve families, so at maximum you would have all, um, cars for the users plus ten staffs. We have total twenty-two, we have twenty-three, um, here on site. After school, primarily their users are middle school and high students who are accessing this facility by walking across the street from the Knack Mall and School. Um, and parents dropping off or picking up, so really they're just using that one-way circulation route and dropping off child or picking up their child. And then afterwards, when there could be larger community, um, meetings, parent speakers, um, you know, basketball leagues, that sort of thing. Um, the idea is that we had more parking than the twenty-three that, um, you're accommodating on site, that we could share the parking of the Knack Mall, because by that time, this school would know a lot of new possession. Um, I've already discussed the one-way circulation for ease of drop-off and pickup. We also are meeting the current zoning requirement and we want these space for, you know, space. And then the last thing I wanted to run this plan is that we have indicated that parking spaces one and two, which are when you come in off of Low Street, yeah, right there, there's two that are closest to Low Street, and then also parking spaces twenty and twenty-one, which are closer to the dumpster, um, would be for staff only, so that we wouldn't have conflicts with parents coming in and out of those spaces. It would be staff that would be there duration of the day and it would be, yeah. And I believe I am wanting to hand this over to.
Good evening, I'm Scott Hall, the EPA architect. I'm gonna briefly go over sort of the exterior design of the building, give you some sense of, uh, what we were trying to accomplish. Uh, in the rendering of the screen, the existing building is on the right-hand side of the building, and we're doing very minimal work on the exterior. We're just cleaning it up, uh, bringing in new electrical and water services. Uh, there will be new, uh, highly energy efficient windows installed. There'll be triple pane curtain wall windows throughout. They'll all be fixed, non-operable, so that we can control air coming in and out of the building for energy purposes, so that we can try and move towards the net zero energy ordinance that the city has adopted. Uh, in the center of the building is the one-story, uh, addition. It's, uh, primarily, uh, aluminum curtain wall again on the front of the building as well as in the back of the building, so that we create this much natural light coming into the main entry of the building. Uh, and then on the left side, you can see the modular gym. Uh, we've used colors to try and break up the structure. Uh, at the bottom, we have a red color to hearken back to the brick on the original building. Uh, we will have panels in the center that will be vertical siding and then the, the red pilaster strips, uh, in between to sort of break up the structure, uh, and not make it look so massive. Uh, and then the top of the building, we've got a course of, uh, charcoal colored siding that sort of ties in with the, uh, siding, uh, the trim on the existing building, which we'll be painting a charcoal color as well. Uh, on the next slide. This is just a little bit more detail on the existing building. Uh, on the, um, image in the upper right corner, that's the rear of the existing building, and there's some windows that are currently there that are about forty inches wide and forty inches tall. And so what we're gonna do is use those existing openings, but cut the CMU and the brick down to the existing slab so that we can create large, uh, large window openings, uh, with southern light that'll come into what is called the hangout space, which is the primary activity space, uh, and meeting space in the building. Uh, in the image in the center of the building, uh, there's a couple of garage doorways that are existing, so what we're doing is again infilling those with, uh, curtain wall structures to allow a lot of natural light to come into the building, um, and take advantage of those existing large openings that already exist. And then on the, the image at the bottom of the screen, again, that's, um, sort of the other side of the existing building, and we're again just taking, making use of the existing window openings, infilling those with highly energy efficient windows. Uh, and then on the left side, you can sort of again see the, uh, modular building in, modular gym in the background there. Again, the colors are trying to tie into what we have going on the existing. Uh, for the exterior lighting, we have installed lighting around the perimeter of the building, primarily just for eager purposes. We're trying to keep it fairly minimal, but exterior not be used at nighttime, uh, so at least in the back. Um, so it's really just emergency lighting for eager purposes. So there's a small fixture at the top there that will be located around the perimeter of the existing building to allow light of eager's path from, from the rear of the building. Um, the light there in the center, there's three of those fixtures that will be mounted on the front of the gym, uh, and on the side of the gym to help light up the parking lot. And then there will be three pole-mounted lights, uh, at the bottom that will be in the parking lot area to provide a nice even lighting level throughout the parking lot. We did have, we did include a photometric analysis in the package that we submitted, uh, and it meets the current requirements in the city ordinance. Yeah, Diane will come up there.
Hi Diane, Gag, you're the city engineer. Um, I worked on a stormwater, um, for this project. Um, we did submit a floor report and that was reviewed by a third party and approved. I'm just gonna give you a little, um, little analysis of these existing conditions. Um, so currently, the site is very, very flat. We have, um, wetlands towards the back and a drainage ditch along Low Street. Um, any stormwater coming out of Low Street north of the site, um, enters the roadway ditch and roadway headwall, a twenty-four inch stormwater pipe that runs all the way to just before the church school at Perry Way. Um, and additionally, we have about half of the site, the existing building, existing, um, parking gravel area. That area flows towards the front of the site where there is a, um, a small swale that runs along the, that southern border perimeter of the site against the armory property. That flows into an existing catch basin right on, right before Low Street. Um, and that ties into that twenty-four inch, um, drainage pipe that I mentioned earlier, and that goes down to Perry Way. Um, and then the remainder of the site, what we have in the rear, um, that all flows towards the back, towards the existing wetland, and that ultimately was, ultimately ends up in the drainage swale systems that we have around the industrial park and up to the, um, the Little River out back. Um, the proposed conditions, we are trying to keep it similar to what is existing today. Um, we will have to be headwall out on Low Street further north just to accommodate the entrance to the parking, um, so that will continue to catch the roadway drainage from north of the site, um, and that will continue as it does today down to Perry, Perry Church School. Um, the parking lot area is broken into a couple of sections. We have the majority of the parking and some of the sidewalks that will flow over the lot itself and into a water quality, this way, um, water quality unit at the exit of the, um, second, yep.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a little, no, a little further down, kind of, in the, yeah. And then, um, where we have parking, um, adjacent to the, um, ground, along Low Street, that area flows into that grass area, so it'll naturally drain through there and to a catch basin that also ties into, um, Low Street. And then in the southern area of the property, we have, um, that, we close into where we're re, we're going to recreate that drainage swale, um, and into the existing catch basin. Um, so all of that, as it does today, out into the drainage pipe on Low Street and onto Perry Way. Um, and for the rear of the property, we capture, we're going to capture the drainage from each of the existing structure and the proposed structures, as well as the patio area and the basketball court. And all of that drainage will flow through a gutter system or over the patio itself into either the planted stormwater basin or piped to the rain garden out back. Um, that will provide for both storage and treatment for this water before it heads out into the wetlands out back. Um, and each, each of these systems, we're examining, are both pre-existing condition and proposed conditions in a two and ten and a hundred-year storm. So your cost will be less than the pre-existing condition, um, that there are out there today. Um, so the existing conditions, we don't really have any sort of treatment or control of the stormwater that's out there. So all of these, um, systems implemented will just provide for control and treatment to, um, the stormwater. So all of these systems implemented will just provide for control and treatment to the stormwater from this.
That pretty much sums up what we were going to present to you tonight and related to the open up conditions.
Questions?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted you mentioned there the four staff parking spaces is.
There's, there's 10 staff numbers. So when I go in the morning, they, the maximum amount of families that they accommodate for the morning programming is 12. And so that plus the 10 staff, it all 10 staff for the drive there would give us 22 parking spaces and worshiping 23.
On the, on the diagram, you show the, the crosswalk across Low Street. From the Knuckle Mall into, into the island separating the parking. And the entrance, the new entrance is directly off. I'm assuming all the kids are going to go straight across the parking lot instead of walking around. If you give any consideration to providing the walkway across that or eliminating one of those parking spaces. I don't, I don't think they're going to walk around.
Right. I mean, that is a depression there for stormwater. So this is part of the drainage ditch that runs along Low Street. So I don't know that we would want to put a walkway across that without impeding the stormwater. That's why we have the sidewalk shown across the front ditch and then the side, the right side of the parking.
Just giving kids, but I guess they won't be running into the ditch.
I think that deserves a little more discussion because I agree all of them. If, if you've got a crosswalk coming directly across the street and it's opposite the entrance. The logical connection is straight across the park. And I think there must be some way of dealing with drainage out near the street. That would allow a paved surface to come over the top of that. You know, the, the alternative to what's shown in the plan here is it looks like kids have to make a right-hand turn. Cross on a crosswalk across the entry and then walk on a very secure this sidewalk. All the way around the perimeter of the parking to get to the main entry. And I, I just think the nature of kids is to go in a straight line. And I would think from an efficiency point of view from the site plan. You, you might want to think about just creating a change in paving, creating a direct connection from that crosswalk directly over. But I don't think that's possible in terms of the site ratings. And I think it's a much more efficient layout in terms of pedestrian.
Okay, yeah, right. I'm just wondering about, yeah, the alignment of the crosswalk over Low. That would go shift. Because it doesn't really line up that the crosswalk's coming from the school either. There's a lot of turns in that.
Well, actually, I'm kind of thinking, possibly, I see a Low Street orientation is appropriate. I'm going to be able to see the kids in close. You might have some issues there.
Yeah, I do have that concern as well.
I think TEC was trying to balance the bump out across the street with not truncating the parent rough up on the Knuckle Mall too much. But also coming as close to the front door off the Knuckle Mall as possible. So we could go back to them and ask if we shifted. If we shifted it north by 20 feet or so and had it be more of a intersection, would that satisfy your concerns?
Well, I think hurting, hurting the children one way or the other is an important consideration, right? First of all. Condition that we've been going. This project. But if I could point my thing out on the screen. What we have. The cars cannot, here they cannot hear. I'm wondering if there's a way you could be attributable to. Just thinking about it. Do you see those? Right here, the parents are trying to get. So I'm a little bit concerned. These, the exit here, they may be not. You there to keep it a bit.
Again, the other consideration, we're just leaving the plate the way it is. We're concerned about the drainage ditch. And you want to direct the kids from not walking into the drainage ditch. You can put a small fence and at least guide them towards the sidewalk and then.
Well, what I was wondering is if we, the crosswalk across Low Street, if that gets shifted north. Either on that side or on the other side. So that you still have to bump out exactly where it is. So parents exiting, you know, picking up their child and then quickly trying to get onto Low Street would have even more. Personal distance before they see, or personal distance before they see the child crossing. But then you're making the crosswalk and at the turn. So it's more of an intersection rather than offset mid walk.
We had the same conversation with the ball field. We were kind of seeing restrictive and I know you guys worked it out. It was like a compromise of compromises that, that allowed less density with kids walking and people turning. Because when people turn, they're not looking as if, you know, obviously straight.
We can, I can bring this to TEC and see if they have any concerns. I'm not a traffic engineer.
I would look at trying to line it up with the entry. And if you can avoid then the crosswalk. Both the entry and the exit, it's creating that direct connection. To me, that's a plus for the kid and we don't have all of that. What I'm saying is if, if you move the crosswalk on Low Street, just 10 feet, not even to the north. So that it lines up with the new entry. Then, then you could eliminate one of the parking spaces, space numbers. That, eliminate one of those parking spaces. And you could do a paving change in the traffic lane of the parking lot. And the kids could walk directly across the crosswalk and directly to the.
You're suggesting a crosswalk across.
And just, yeah, I'm suggesting a paving change there rather than a crosswalk at the entrance. Then a circuitous sidewalk to get you just much more direct. And you know, if you've got a cross traffic in the parking lot somewhere, it would almost rather cross. Parking lot where cars have slowed down or they go over Low Street rather than right at Low Street. Yeah, the only thing that people are backing up. You know what I mean? It's like, unless you really made it significantly and then turn it right. You know, it's like a, it's the rainy day. You're backing up, people are coming in, kids are walking. You smile at that.
I think they're right.
Well, I think if you're changing pavement and creating.
I think you simplify it, the entry and try and don't, I wouldn't mess with the parking lot. Yeah, yeah. That's far cleaner.
And it gives you a far. That we can get up more speed.
Can I ask also, um, down, down at the exit. There's some sidewalk that's been added there and there's a crosswalk. Is, is there an expectation that there are kids walking along side of Low Street there?
No, this, I mean, the scope of this project is to add the sidewalk there. But potentially a future city project, we would want to extend the sidewalk down to the church school. But it wouldn't be part of this.
Yeah, I mean, I. Certainly trying to do as comfortable as possible, but then to try to cover, you know, with the improvements that are down on the front. Property to make sure that we've at least accommodated future connection that may happen because it's desirable to happen. But it is a. So that's the reason why I wrapped that driveway.
Uh, one, one last question if I could, just in terms of where the drop off and pickup happens. And is there any expectation that, that there would be vans or small buses or anything moving?
No.
It's all.
It's just parents.
Where, where does that happen?
So you pull in off of the street at the north entrance and then you drive around and the children will be dropped off. The, you can see the, if you go to the other plan, Andy, you'll see it's like, like an entry. Right, yeah, right there. And that's the front door to the lobby.
There's also the exit.
So you're also your lobby and a little bit of a.
That's right. There's another entrance where the small rectangle is on the end of the modular gym. And you're behind the tree. Oh, sorry.
Wade, are you with us? Did you want to?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm here. I just, I agree with Kim's comment about the crosswalk being moved to the north if we could. But we don't want to put the pads and the kids through the parking lot like the original red line showed. I think we could talk to TEC about moving the crosswalk to the north. I just, I have to just confirm with the, about the queue from the traffic signal at Topps Lane. That help fighters go back beyond the crosswalk. We were trying to balance keeping a good curb extension, trying to keep the crosswalk closest to the front door of the school as we can. Because that's what we thought some of the activity would be. Obviously, it's not close enough. We'd like it even closer. So we were trying to push it to the south originally, but it started pushing more towards the north. Because we're shortening the pickup drop off area in front of the school. So that's how we came up with that original location. It was very well vetted and thought out, but the idea of moving in even more north might even work also. So I just want to support that.
I have a couple of questions. One, on the sidewalk parallel to the entry driveway. Could that be just brought down along the property lines to make the kids making the right angle turn? It's just kind of a smoother connection?
Sorry, I said that again.
So right now you come in along the driveway, you make a right angle turn to the right and then another right angle turn to the left. Would you just swoop that sidewalk along parallel to the property line so it doesn't follow the driveway?
Oh.
Yes, it's property then.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to start that's just.
Yeah. That's true. That's correct.
Easy way we can do that.
You could turn a little bit and follow the fence line, right? Like you're on the red line now.
Yeah.
Try to just navigate that property line with this.
It just gets rid of your landscaping and it, and, and it opens the mouth up of the driveway a little bit wider. Right now it's pretty narrow. So you got some little traffic coming in there and control. If you bump that sidewalk in, you lose that narrowness of the entrance point. But I don't think there's much, honestly. It doesn't sound like you're going to lose a lot.
Sorry, might be my bad. Wait, I think Rick was referring to this right here.
And I'm not, I'm not talking about changing the curb.
Oh, just sidewalk. Okay, okay. So leave, so leave the curb, curb line, but follow that red line for the sidewalk. Yep, yep. Okay.
And you can escape that corner.
Sure, sure.
The second question I have is, it looks like you're planning for a double barrel exit. And that seems dangerous to me on Low Street. Because one car is going to be blocking the view of the other. You've got 24 foot wide driveway. Is there some reason you need that double barrel exit or could we narrow that down?
Um, well, it's, so are you, so on the exit, was I say 24? So they're allowing them to go side to side. I mean, it's snow, I mean, if you make it too narrow, it makes snow clearing really a challenge for us. We could put edge lines in and try to stripe it so it looks like one lane, uh, one lane coming out. So you might not have that double barrel, double queue happening side by side.
You've got, you've got 16 feet coming in.
Yeah.
Just one, couldn't do 16 feet going in.
I, I can't see a problem with Kim's season issue with that originally.
We want to check with the fire department on that too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You're saying riding a fire truck and making a turning radius.
Yeah, you shrink it. You shrink it because, because you know, when you come down the ramp from Route 100 to Baraback Street. You always, each car can't see the other car, can't see cars going the other way.
Did we talk about, did we talk about whether or not the exit, not 20, but more, but why that driveway? Could that just be a right-hand turn versus?
Can't, you can't do that. City is going to be angry.
Feel like they're trying to tell. You know, and I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I know we talked about.
I don't think it's, it practically would probably get me used. You know, people will still be trying.
And the other question I had is on the, on the traffic concept plan. Are we going to have those lane markings in front of the rec center? When the rec center is built? You know, with, with the understanding that they don't extend beyond the frontage or much beyond the frontage of the property. Is the intent to have to mark those 11 foot lanes?
Yeah.
And the five foot lanes?
Yes, I, 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 I believe so. I can't, I, I mean, that was the whole idea is, is narrowing the cross section there. So we could allow for bike facilities on both north and south side of the street. I, I assume we'd be doing those markings. Yep.
Okay. And, and I just was, so I just didn't know whether that was a reasonable thing to do to start those. To start and end those, those bike lanes in the middle of the, you know, with no continuation. So I like, I really like to have that.
Yeah. So Rick, I don't think we would, we would stripe it for a bike lane. We'd have the space for it. So in the future, when we do put our bike facility in, we got that extra space. So at least I would just call it unofficial, officially a shoulder. You know, but I want to call it a bike lane officially. I call it move a shoulder, which gives you, so.
It's good. And so you'll be able to look at shifting that crosswalk before.
I have three things, shifting the crosswalk to the north, at the north of the intersection. Angling the sidewalk to hug the property line and looking at potentially narrowing that exit drive. Ending turning radius and fire department buy-in.
Sounds good.
I have one last question about pickup. So the only place you can pick up is at the main entry?
I'm so sorry, I was starting to say, and Andy, if you want to go to. And there's another entrance, the gym, that little rectangle next to the dumpster is actually a doorway entrance. Right behind the tree. Yeah.
Cars, cars could stack up the width of the gym, like from the main entry.
I mean, yes, and you're going to think of, yes.
Is there any way you could get rid of spaces 22 and 23 of the play by zone there?
I think that's why we had two of those parking spaces be staff only.
22 and 23 or less.
The gym.
The two parallel parking spaces right in front of the gym.
You want to get rid of those too?
Could you get rid of those and make that a space for cars to wait? I'm thinking of what you did at the baseball.
Right. I think that this is going to be more of a staggered situation than, than. I appreciate that you're thinking about like every child leaving at the same time. I think the way that they have sort of staggered leaving and entering into the building. So I'm not sure you're. Yeah.
There's a place for at least a few cars. Yes. Yes.
If there's nothing else, I can open the public hearing. Any comments? Is there anybody here who would like to speak? Yes, board. Name and address if anyone.
I'm Exontech 21 Smith Street. I'm speaking as a member of the New Report Local Streets group. Um, I'm concerned about is the, almost the initial comment you have in of, you know, the crosswalks. Um, the possibility that they may try to walk or walk their bikes along the low street, like where there are no, no, um, sidewalk. And there was an idea earlier about putting fences up. I forget if it was yours. And, um, I don't know if this is a big enough issue at this point. I know eventually we want to have sidewalks on that side of the street. And if it's a concern you have now, maybe something should be done preventatively, or you can wait and see if it becomes a problem and deal with it. It's not exactly good, man. So it's a, it's a concern, especially with kids coming potentially up from the charter school. We know now they're going to have to cross the street down where they normally do. Up the sidewalk and come across this, we crossed. And I think that's a great idea when you come out with, with the moving across. But um, just kids are kids, as you were saying earlier. Something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? No? Okay, we're good.
What's that? Do you want to address that?
Yeah. Can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, Owen Smith, 175 story avenue, uh, two comments. Uh, the first one has to do with the, uh, Low Street Crosswalk. Um, you know, I, I, it's a mid block crosswalk. I know those are not desirable. I can see that's why they want to put the hawk signal in. Uh, my comment is maybe moving the crosswalk a bit further east on Low Street. Closer to the existing armory building. Um, at least that way it lines up with the front entrance to the school, which is probably the more direct route anyway they're going to take. Um, right now I think it would encourage jaywalking because they'll just cut across and then cut into the gym. Um, the concern with that though is right turning vehicles outside of the facility uh, would have limited sight distance of people crossing there though. So that might require some mitigations to the mid block crosswalk uh, be above and beyond a hawk signal. And then my second comment has to do with the, uh, pickup and drop off lane they have on the north side of Low Street. Um, you know, building a a pedestrian bump out. Uh, probably and shifting the lanes further south to provide more room because right now that, that shoulder that people do the pickup, drop off in, they foul the travel lane. Uh, which does create a hazard to the, uh, vehicles traveling and also pedestrians. So I'm curious if there's ever, if there's some thought about just shifting the lanes further south to, uh, address that need, which is pickup and drop off. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, you have a closing public comment. Actually, one other thing did occur to me is a question. I think somebody had mentioned the concern, um, at the exit about the fire, fire truck turning movement. How about the, the entrance? It seems like it's a very sharp turn as, as vehicles come in and there's a tree and some shrubs there. Is that? Have you looked at the, at the, um, turning radii, radius at that entrance? For fire?
Yeah, I think we, we looked at the, the turning radius for, um, the exit and the exit. Um, I mean, we, I will definitely double check to be sure that that, um, works. Um, but yeah. Here's a certain line.
Cause it sounds straight up at the exit.
Yeah.
Yeah, then. It's amazing, right?
Yeah.
Well, so the other side.
I'm just thinking, if cars are parked in the parking spaces, it treated, you know, this one. Then we'll
Here.
Yes. So
Yeah, so just for now.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not there's far in downwards, it's not
Then we don't have curbing within the parking lot itself, only on the outside where there's a sidewalk. There is no curbing on that inside.
So they can do a later by only pushes. We just have to Yeah, just Okay, um, can I ask about, Kim, about your timeline? Um, and we could, we could do this two different ways. We could try to wrap everything up tonight, which I originally thought was possible, but there's a lot of comments here. So I didn't know what you're you know, bridge the timeline, maybe get it done or whether
So our last report to the council was that we would have this out to the late November.
November 6th, if we, if we made our final decision on November 6th, we'd have
That should be fine.
That's just Yeah, that would assume you might be being that is before. It's never
So can I just go over what changes or make sure? So we have them moving the crosswalk north. Um, angling the sidewalk to hug the property line. Um, looking at potentially narrowing that exit drive, but double checking the turning radius on both and checking the fire sign off. And then am I eliminating parking spaces 22 and 23 and making that apparent?
Can I just, we let the
I would caution about eliminating them as parking spaces because then you're looking for variance from parking. So, uh, because right now they're just meeting it. Um, you could consider maybe making them a shorter duration parking spot. Still meeting the ordinance and perhaps addressing the concern brought up about wanting to have them more available for people coming.
One of those to be available.
You have one access.
I don't know if two, there's only one that could numerically be, be that
I don't think they have an extra. I think, I think they have to, yeah.
Okay.
Right, that's
If it makes the exit narrower from 24 feet to 16 feet, you may pick up an extra spot next to face number 12.
A
So if you, if you designated those two spaces in front of the gym as 15 minute spaces, would you still qualify?
We do not address that. So I'm going to say yes, we need to go.
But then it becomes a drop off thing.
I'd like to call them short term parking. In order to meet the ordinance.
Right. You know, roll.
So is that it, Dr. Cameron?
That's what I have on my list.
So what I would suggest is that we close the public hearing. Continue the discussion through November 6th.
I, if I may, just for procedural purposes, I would technically recommend that the hearing remain open until we get proceeding, information from the
Okay. Okay. I will do. Can somebody make that motion?
Both to continue the public hearing to the November 6th.
So, so Okay, thank you. Um, any instructions? Or favor? All right.
So you did a good project. Really came together. Got together pretty
Well, never say more.
Now the gym moved kids. We all have times when it's
So we have one more in general business that we should take care of, which is an informal discussion with BP Merrimack LLC about reaching the 312.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Andy Church. I'm a landlord at Seaside Legal Solutions, address 123 Main Street, Lobster. Here tonight on behalf of BP Merrimack LLC, the owner of 300 312 Merrimack Street and 3 Woodland Street. I believe that it is, uh, central mic effectors also available via Zoom. Can't answer much of that. Might not be able to answer. So informal review, uh, just want to give you some background on this project and, uh, we'll sort of explain why in a little bit here. But just for some background first, the, the proposal right now is, um, to build a garage addition to the existing two family structure, which is shown on the south. Um, there, front on Merrimack Street. And then there are two separate freestanding singles, single family additions. Um, first one connects to the existing garage that runs on Woodland. And then a carriage house in the rear of the lot. Next please. So background on the lot is located in the WMD district. Um, it's technically two parts, as I mentioned, the 3 Woodland Streets in the rear there. Uh, vacant and undersized that merged for zoning purposes. The existing two family structure is non-conforming as it relates to the front yard setback and the height. The use is also technically non-conforming. It, it would, it would require special long scanning use. And then the garage also, which is on backyard. Um, so the, the relief that's required for this project is pretty extensive. Um, we'll need from the ZVA a new special permit for this, for the single family use and a number of dimensional variances. Um, first would be bought area. We technically have enough area for the two family used currently, but you can't use that existing law area to cover the, the new two families. We have front yard varies for the building number two, which is one of the fronts of Woodland Street. Side and rear yard variances for the carriage jumps. And then we have, uh, section 6C, as was mentioned pretty essentially earlier. And that's why we're here tonight. So we're not actually requesting any relief from the planning board. Um, you can move to the next slide with this. So we're here because as was mentioned previously, you guys have heard people over sections 6C generally, um, in terms of special permit. The issue with that is that the special permit only allows for two single family dwellings. It doesn't allow for the configuration that we're looking for. So that would require variance in and of itself from the ZVA. There is an idea voted of asking for a very special permit. But it seemed to make more sense as the city staff was looking at it to request all the relief from the ZVA. To get some feedback from you guys because there's sort of area of expertise in regard to this section. Um, I hopefully support from you as well. You can go to the next please. So the purpose basically of, of constructing the free, the free, the separate freestanding structures rather than you know, the applicant could pretty, probably pretty easily add an additional to the rear of the structure. And just require a new special permit, but he's working with just this historical commission and the National Park Service on hopefully getting some grant funding to for, um, historic rehabilitation. And in informal meetings with them, to date, they have very much preferred the separate freestanding structures rather than sort of what would potentially diminish the historic characteristics of the existing house by adding on to it. So that building in 1775. That plan shown on the screen right now is from 1914. You see the historic layout of the lots. Um, and just so it's, uh, it's a it's registered with the store, with the National Register of Historic Places. Um, and it's also named as a historic and archipelago. So I think I just have the, the whole plan set queued up here, which we don't necessarily have to go through unless anybody has any specific questions, but again, this is like plan and proposals in red. I even scrolled through and there's just building plans for the addition to the existing structure. Um, so there's garage addition there. That would be the first floor addition. Again, as the garage is on the left there, there'd be a bedroom above that. That's the existing two family structure. And then here's just some construction plans here. You can go next again. And then move on to the, um, building number two floor plans. And just, sorry, this is the last location. Yeah, you, you can keep going. Sorry. Or cross section there. So here are the four plans for the second building. As you see, there's the existing garage there shown on the right. And it'll be a three bedroom, um, two story structure. You can keep going through there. So these are the architectural plans. As you can see, they sort of match the sort of characteristics of the existing house. And finally, the, the carriage house, which is a two bedroom, also use. And then here's just an area view of the lot, of the surrounding properties. Next please. This is just a subset of the map, showing the whole neighborhood. You can see the lot there. Uh, here's the existing structure from multiple angles. So then I wanted to touch on the section 6C requirements, which is some why we're here. Um, as you see though, we're requesting variances from a lot of the section. The intention is to comply with it as much as possible. So subsection A pertains to law requirements. As I mentioned, we need a number of dimensional variances from the ZVA. Um, so you have there's a lawyer requirement, the second requirement, and then the last one, there's 7A regulations. Again, we'll, we'll ask from the ZVA. And then the fourth subsection here pertains to, um, the configuration of the layout of the structures, the mobile structures on the lot. Again, because we're three, we can't technically are converting existing garage into a separate structure. And because we're on the corner of a lot, we can run on either of those partially comply with section. Uh, next please. And here's just layout again, just so you can see it. Next please. So subsection B is the preservation restriction subsection. So we do intend to comply with this subsection. Um, we have a draft. We are, and it works currently, but we're just going to put it on hold as we move through this process. But, um, assuming that things go well, here with the ZVA, we'll get that the, um, it's our mission to possible. Next please. So here's your special permit criteria. And again, although we're not requesting a special permit, we do believe that we meet these standards. Um, ultimately, you know, we're, we're adding initial housing to the city's housing stockwell, retaining the historic characteristics of the lot and the neighborhood. Um, so we think that we will be consistent with the presidential character of the neighborhood. We won't diminish, um, privacy of any of the adjacent lots. As you'll see in the, the next one, there's a boatyard in the rear and also sort of wraps around into the right yard, the right side yards setbacks. The, the carriage house, which is the only the only proposal that actually abuts any of the butters. Again, as you see, there's, uh, like the, and then, uh, building number two fronts on Woodland and then the existing building again front on Merrimack Street is only being expanded. Then, sorry, there's one more subsection there. Um, I think I already you can go ahead. So there's just that view again. So you can see tucking in that carriage house and that right hand side would just basically butt those boats and there's no work that would really affect the So subsection B, um, again, pertains to what you guys can do with, with setback and require further setbacks. We are requesting some relief. But then there's also the condition, you can't further subdivide law or and exception addition on whatever leaves that we get from the ZVA that would for the subdivision. It probably wouldn't be allowable by law anyways because it would create I think finally subsection E, um, is the, the financial contributions to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we're, we're willing to comply with this action as well. I think that wraps it up for the section 6C requirements and a basic and a basic overview of the project. Again, we're just, we're interested in plainboard feedback on what we're doing here. Um, you know, anything that you guys think can help us get to a yes here and with the zoning board.
Hey, any comments for anybody here? Questions?
So, just, just to clarify, just to be sure. So, the existing, uh, house is a two-family house?
Yeah.
And you'd be converting that to a single-family?
No, that'll remain to, again, remains a two.
Yeah, okay.
So, the carriage, so the carriage house is an independent dwelling?
Yes. It's, uh, considered an independent, single-family use.
The, um, the financial assistance that you're paying for, that's historic, or where that pertains to building number one, the existing building?
I believe it pertains, I'm not sure if it pertains only to that building or not, um, according to the projects.
So, I would, uh,
Uh, hi, this is Mike Becker. I'm, I'm the applicant.
Okay.
Uh, yes, any, uh, historic tax credits that would be issued would be only for work done on building one.
So, it's, I, thank you, actually, because I guess what that was. Actually, myself. Because I, I previously heard reference to a grant. We're, we're talking about tax credits as opposed to a grant per se, just not, just one, just for context, just, just so the board understands exactly what's being referred to here. We're talking about the typical tax credit structure, not necessarily a, a specialized grant program or something. I have a misspoke, but it's.
So, my, I, I had a concern, I think. When I look at the two, it was two, two apartments. The existing garage is on Marimac Street, ninety-nine Woodland Street is, um, not that much larger. And adding that house to that garage doesn't really create, in terms of the elevations I'm seeing here, doesn't create anything special. So, I guess I don't see why you would not just add a separate building number two comply with the not be attached to it. She doesn't, it doesn't seem, I don't see what the, what the rationale is for attaching a house to the garage and pushing it so close to the street. I think you could, you could have, you know, one less level of relief zoning board by pushing it back and it would also lessen, you know, that's a pretty tight so I would think that you might want to push that house further than that just for livability.
And
We wouldn't be opposed to pushing it further from the street, however, that's the location that the, uh, previous three Woodland historically was and we were trying to match the the buildings that were there.
I understand that. I just don't understand why. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, uh, there was a house there at one point. There isn't one there now. It wasn't connected to the garage. There wasn't a garage. So, yeah, it seems to me that it's kind of kind of stretching things a little bit to try to, to put it there. It would just make more sense to try to put it a little bit further back from the street and and not to, I think it would be more historically accurate, not to attach it to the garage. I think it's, it's, it's looking, it's looking very twentieth century, um, the way you're, the way it's we can go twentieth century, not twenty-first century. It's really very nineteen fifty-ish, I can see the way it's showing right now. So, I, I would just separate it from the garage. Um, because you're not going to try to match the style of the garage and, and try to add something that's a little bit more consistent with zoning setbacks. I don't, I don't have, I don't have any problem with the idea of four units on this lot and in three different buildings. I guess that's just the one thing that we just chanced on with these, is not having a good rationale.
The, the thought process there was that the garage is in good condition. I hate to demolish a perfectly good structure and I didn't want the building uh, to be less historically accurate, but then also I didn't want the building to be subservient to the garage, like kind of hiding behind the garage. So, it was sort of a fine line we were walking there between, you know, putting the building back where it was or demolishing the garage, which I'm kind of opposed to, to that general thought process, perfectly good building. Uh, so, uh, I'd, I'd be happy to incorporate the feedback of the board if that was a, a sticking point.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think that, I think the garage can stay. It's clear. Um, just don't see the connect, you know, connecting your building. I think the garage, it's, you know, as, as Andy said, I think the garage being the driving factor, how you design the building. I think that we could be, could be, could be historic. And who's going to know that it was historically four, four point three feet back from the street? Nobody, nobody's going to know that it's not going to be.
Unless you're recreating.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Unless you recreate what we have. Um, again, I think that that it's, it's really controlled, you think a little bit. Again, you could, you could, um, move the building, separate the building from the garage. It's, it's going to be, it's not, it's not going to be historic, historically located if you attach it to the garage. So, that's my, just my, my perspective. I may, maybe nobody's going to agree with me on that, but I think that's the wrong way to go. If it, if it were me, if I were, you know, the big developer, I would, I would actually demolish the garage and put the house kind of on the, on the property. But, um, yeah.
I tend to agree with that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just for quick. Asian, just to, because we've had some discussion about this. If folks are interested in getting a lead from that. Just for clarity, is your, your approach here is that some belief granted by the ZVA is going? All the boards would be, that patient would, other than the informal feedback here that may be run into or considered by the ZVA, all permitting would take place before the ZVA, so you're right. Yes. Okay. Self over somebody, because we've had discussed about the second one before.
And I, and I don't think, I don't think you're actually asking for us to make a recommendation.
Uh, we're just like, very normal.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I actually was referring towards the idea that we as staff is something consideration that we raise here, so the ZVA could take that into account.
Yeah, just, I just, you know, again, we're giving you, as you requested, informal meeting. Anybody else have anything that they would like to ask? Okay. Okay. Think that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. A Google of minutes. I made some comments on the September fourth minute. I can have another chance for the minutes. Does anybody have any other further comments?
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so can we, uh, motion, I don't want to. Can we have a motion to approve the September fourth? As, as amended.
A motion to approve September fourth, my twenty-four minutes.
Second, yeah, one there. Can we not review and approve the housing correction?
Yes.
Yeah, quite frankly, I assume so. We'll take November.
You're in the same, so November six.
Yeah.
November six, we have.
Oh, yes. You're giving my notes for.
Yeah. So, November six, we have the public hearing with three centers, we have a special permit for short-term, not a variance. Public hearing, joint public hearing with the planning development committee on the ETA zone.
Yeah.
We are going to approve a decision for fifty-nine Woodland Street.
Yeah.
We're going to approve the planning board report, EPOD, and we're going to approve the housing correction. Anything else that we might, maybe.
Uh, not this time. Knowledge, I obviously will do our best to push everything out as soon as possible. Yeah, if you have any, like, to be here. So, we could obviously be a.
Well, let's do the MTA zone first. Try to develop. And let's rush through that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I think three centers might be. And then we'll hopefully get that to pretty, and then do those, do the two approvals.
Decisions.
Decisions. Afterwards, that, that will be valuable enough because.
We know we have to write it in these for three center.
Doesn't matter. Start the voting. Are we starting a little bit?
Here. What is anybody who may have been listed, maybe for somebody who you do something. And it's going to sort of back. So, if you just. You gotta do wherever.
True. This, sorry.
What? Motion to adjourn.